This board has the power, under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the city of Des Moines, to hear requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, conditional use permit requests, and appeals from the decision of the staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance, and to make decisions in such matters. The members of the board are citizens of the city and have been appointed to the board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'm just going to take a minute here to introduce our board members and the city staff members here today. On the audience's right is Jake Christensen. Next to him is Dave Gare. Next to Dave is Linda Westergaard. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. On the audience's left, next to me, is Cherie Mortis. Cindy Smith is absent today, scheduled absence, and we have one vacant seat at this time. Our city staff with me on my left is Glenna Frank, city legal counsel; Bert Drost, city planner, out in the front row; Eric Lundie, city planner; Anu Menhas, city planner; and Sue Ann Donovan, the city's zoning enforcement officer. Now, for those of you who, this may be the only time you're here, or you haven't been here for a while, I'm going to review the procedures here just briefly. We will kind of help everybody through the process here today, but just to give you the background, this is an open and informal meeting. It is being recorded. The board members have received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. Copies of these agendas and the staff recommendations are available in the trays by the door. If you would like to step up and grab one, feel free to do so. This board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case is identified in the written staff report, and if the facts, as determined by the board, demonstrate that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. Each appeal will be announced in order, and the staff will first present a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified during the staff presentation. The appellant or representative of the appellant is then allowed to speak and will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed up to five minutes each to present his or her comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed up to five minutes each to present their comments. The applicant will then be allowed up to three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. All speakers are requested to speak from the podium and begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. All speakers are requested to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law have been satisfied and to ensure that they are respectful of time considerations. If necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board will then close any further public comment on the agenda item, and the board will then immediately deliberate the request and make a decision. If your appeal is approved today, we ask that you wait until tomorrow to go to the Permit and Development Center to apply for any building permits. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of this board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing portion of the agenda. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Polk County District Court. If you believe you have been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. And finally, just a few housekeeping items. Please avoid conversation in the audience so as to not be disruptive or distracting from the hearing that is in progress. Please ensure that your cellphone ringer has been silenced. And once the agenda item you are interested in has been completed, you are welcome to leave the hearing at that time. If you need to use a restroom, you can leave through the main door here and walk through the atrium to the far north end of City Hall. There are restrooms on your left. And there will be a 10-minute break in the hearing around 3:00 or 3:30 if needed. So, that's the background. To take a look at the agenda today, Eric, do we have any changes or requests for changes on the agenda?
The first thing I need to point out is that item number 11, which was an appeal at 4140 Park Avenue, that was the Valero at the corner of Park and Southwest 47th, Second Street, that's been withdrawn from the agenda. It's since been determined that as a gas station, convenience store, they are allowed to sell beer and wine without a condition of these permit as long as they maintain the 40% requirement. So, we will not be hearing that one today. And then item number 12, which is the, was the appeal for an electric fence at 3300 Vandelia Road. After we sent out notices, we discovered that a variance had already been issued back in 1999, so they did not require the variance for this item at this time. And then, the only other change to the agenda would be item number 15, which is at 3530 East Euclid Avenue for a new garage in the rear yard area. Staff has recommended approval. I've spoke with the applicants, and they're in agreement with the staff's recommendation. We did not receive any opposition to this appeal, so staff would recommend moving this to the consent agenda.
Okay. Can I check with the audience, see if there's anybody here who's concerned about item 15? Anybody here on item 15 with any concerns? Okay. All right. Okay, so 11 and 12 have been withdrawn or weren't necessary, so they're removed. Is there a motion from the board to place item 15 on the consent agenda? So, moved by Jake, a second?
Second.
Second by Linda. Okay, so for consent agenda, then, we'll be voting on these items in a block here in just a moment, then. Is there any, I'll list these off to see if there's anybody who has any comments on those that have any concerns from a negative perspective. We'll be looking at approving, item number one is an exception at 1815 Southwest First. Item two is a variance at 1801 16th Street. Item three is an exception at 2635 Hubble. Item four is a variance and exception at 1601 South Union. And item five is an exception at 1101 Crocker Street. And then, item 15 would be an exception at 3530 East Euclid. Is there anybody here who has a concern and wants to speak in opposition to approval of those requested appeals? Okay. Sir, you want to step up to the podium quickly and tell us which item?
Jim Johnson, 1918 Avalon Road, and he's speaking in opposition to item two. There's a new school there, small. It doesn't need a billboard-sized sign. If it were commercial, and if it were zone commercial, I could understand and...
Okay. All right. All right, we'll go ahead and hear that, then, in just a few minutes. You can go ahead and sit down, and then we'll come back around to it, so. All right, thank you. Okay, so, we would have items one, three, four, five, and 15 for approval on consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent?
I make a motion to approve items one, three, four, five, and 15 on the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries 5-0. Okay, so we'll go ahead, pardon me, and start off, then, with item two, a variance request from Des Moines Public Schools at 1801 16th Street.
I'll pass one card around. All right, Mr. Chair Members of the Board, this item is for a variance over to have a sign that's larger than what's otherwise allowed. The school district's proposing a 24.06-foot-by-5.83-foot sign that would be mounted on the north facade of a new building that is being constructed. As a school, they're permitted only one 24-square-foot wall-mounted sign, so this does exceed the amount of allowed sign area by 116.36 square feet. The site is the former Cassidy School at the corner of 16th and Jefferson in the Mondamen Presidential Neighborhood. You can see in these site photos that there is a new building under construction there at this time. And then, I'll come back to this photo. The sign that's being proposed would go on this facade, right here, which faces to the north. Here's a picture of what the sign would look like. Again, it's 20, a little over 24 feet across by almost six feet from top to bottom, and it would be an education center named in honor of Jesse Franklin Taylor. He's a World War II vet that the school wants to honor.
Bert, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but before you go too far, can you put that back up there? I read, it says "flat-cut-out stud-mounted aluminum letters," so there's not going to be a backboard to this, they'll actually just, they'll be individual letters, kind of silver in color?
Yeah, they'll be, right to the, correct.
Okay.
I don't believe it'll be illuminated either.
Okay.
So, it won't be lighted at night.
All right, thank you.
Here's the signs, or the site sketch, 16th Street here, Jefferson Avenue, right here, then Chautauqua Parkway, I think curves, and to the north. You can see the footprint of the building. The sign would be located right here, so facing the parking lot with the main entrance to the building here. So, it would be perpendicular to the property across the street to the east. And that was really the big reason staff had recommended approval, why we had placed it on the consent agenda, is that we didn't feel there were any homes being negatively impacted by this sign, and we thought it was reasonable to allow them to have that extra sign area, especially since it wasn't lit. Here's the building elevations. Again, this is the north facade facing, I guess this is looking at it from the north, so, kind of hard to see from this elevation, but this part of the school is bumping, coming out, so this is, I guess, the north facade with the entrance and then the sign on that area here, which, again, from the photo, that would be on this wall right there. So, here's the consent map. We did have one card come back in opposition. I believe it's a different property owner than the person here opposing it today.
Okay.
Staff's recommendation was approval subject to, let's see, just getting a sign permit prior to installation.
Okay.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. This, what's that supposed to be for? It's not too vulnerable to the same children. Wasn't it for parking or something? It was for the sign, was it?
It was for the parking setback. As a school, they're supposed to be at least 30 feet from a front property line for the parking lot, and they wanted the ability to be 15 feet from the front property line in this area down here, so.
How does this sign differ from what's at, like, North High School or some of the other schools? Like, is this a lot bigger, or have we allowed it in other schools?
I know we had allowed the one at East 14th and East University, the Amos High at Middle School, that had a, was it the Bright Boys and Girls Club? That was a similar size as this, but that's the only one I can, I can recall in recent history.
And there's nothing in here but wanting a lighted, mounted sign, because usually they come, of course, they'll come back and then what?
Yeah.
A mounted sign?
Yeah. At this time, this is the only sign they're proposing. As a school, they're also allowed a freestanding monument sign that would be separate from this wall-mounted.
How much bigger is this than what would normally be allowed?
They're allowed 24 square feet as a school.
And how much is this?
This is 140. So, it is, it is very much bigger, yeah.
They're only allowed 24 square feet?
Yeah.
But it's not lit or anything?
Correct. Right, and it's not facing the public street, it's perpendicular. I guess it faces, I believe, is that Allison Avenue to the north?
Right.
But it's perpendicular to 16th Street.
And does it make a difference if there are individual signs? I mean, I know they're bigger, but it's not like they have, have just a, you know, full sign.
Yeah, the way our zoning ordinance measures it is by drawing a rectangle around all of the text, so.
Okay, so that's how it's...
Yeah. If they would slide the text closer together, they could probably cut the area in half if they would, you know, group it closer together.
So, the largest text itself, the letters are only 15 inches high on the main title?
Right.
Okay.
Which is now, like, big.
No.
No.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Bert? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant?
Doug Odie, 1917 Dean Avenue, representing the Des Moines Public Schools. As was indicated, building a new facility at the 1801 16th Street site. This is to house preschool programs and the middle school alternative program for the city of Des Moines. The building was started some time ago for design, and we've been working with the neighborhood associations during the design period. Following the start of the construction, the neighborhoods came to the district with a request that they consider naming the building after Jesse Franklin Taylor, who was a community activist and a person active in the community. They took that request to the naming committee for the Des Moines Public Schools. They approved it, and ultimately, the board approved the naming of the facility, the Jesse Franklin Taylor Education Center Cassidy Building. The district was interested in keeping the historical aspect of the name Cassidy on the building as well. Thus, the reason for the rather lengthy name, probably, but the, based upon the neighborhood desires and the approval by the district, we would like to utilize this name on the building in order to honor both Jesse Franklin Taylor and still recognize the Cassidy Building historical aspect of the project. So, our request today is to install this sign, and as Bert said, it does face north. It's several hundred feet away from the nearest fronting property, and it is, individual letters mounted on a brick building, so it's not going to read a mass of 20, 200, whatever, forgot my glasses today, whatever the dimension is there. So, it's going to be considerably less objectionable than you might think with that size of a dimension on the building. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Doug?
I have one more.
Sure.
So, there are actually two different programs housed at this facility now. It's a middle school and a preschool. I know it's gone through a lot of transformations. I've kind of lost track. I'm a retired teacher, but I know it's been utilized in lots of different, so this signage will represent both of these programs, is that right?
Yeah, it is the name of, it is the name of the facility. The education center would represent the fact that there are multiple programs in the building, yes.
Good one. Anything else for Doug? Okay, we'll check back with you in a little bit. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Just please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Clark Stewart, 2805 Virginia Place. Jesse Franklin Taylor was my father-in-law. He, he lived in that neighborhood for over 60, maybe 70 years. He was very instrumental in, as an activist. He helped, he started with Evelyn Davis, the Mid-City Vision, which was instrumental in getting the Forest Avenue Library as well as the Grub Y in that area. Everybody in that neighborhood knew him. It was the recommendation of the neighborhood associations that the building be named after him, and the school board consented, and I think it'd be a fitting tribute to him and his legacy in that area. Again, you know, it's, being in the commercial real estate business, we have these sign issues all the time. This is a very classy sign. It's individual, I believe, metal letters. It's not lit. It's not obtrusive. It would be, it's going to be a fitting monument on the building and to his legacy. And that's all I can say.
And Clark, I'm curious, was he also a World War II veteran?
He was a World War II veteran. He was, he was head of his VFW post, the post commander, and so, he was very, he went on the honor flights to Washington, very, he was very active.
Thank you. Next up.
My name is Terry Wells, 1157 14th Place. I know for a fact that all five of the enterprise neighborhoods are behind naming this building, having this sign that size. They've been very active in the programming that's going to go in there. We feel that Jesse Taylor is a great example for these youth that we're trying to change in that community. He stood for education, politics, religion, community active, you know, he was a community activist. So, not only is it an appropriate name, the sign, I believe, is appropriate, like I said, Chautauqua, Mondamen Presidential, King Irving, Reverb Inn, and Chatham Park all support what we're doing. The last thing that I'd like to point out is if we look at the, this map, or we can put up the more modern one, but in all actuality, where the sign is going to be placed roughly in about this area, you see, one, there's still some trees here. These houses, this one faces on 16th. So, you're basically going to impact one resident. Even if it was lit up, even if it was one of those electronic ones, but it's not. It's just a very nice sign dedicated to a great community leader with the, with the neighborhoods behind this. So, I strongly urge that you folks go ahead and allow the size of the sign, the school district's behind it. I don't believe that there's, there's a major issue here or a major problem.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Okay, is there anybody else here to speak in support? Okay, hearing none. Anybody here to speak in opposition?
My name's Jan Johnson. I live in Avalon Road on, in Chautauqua Park area, with the Chautauqua Park area as a whole. 1918 Avalon Road.
Thank you.
I have nothing against Mr. Jesse Franklin Taylor. I remember him fondly from other events that I also participated in. My concern is what we've already given up in this neighborhood that I just am going to remind you very briefly of. First of all, the building takes up all of the area that used to be the only green space that Chautauqua Park had, and even some of the Mondamen kids also used it. So, we have already lost, on the very east side, most of what was used as ballfields, as places to play, and what we've had it replaced with is just a small playground that will only be useful for the preschool kids. We've given up the ball hoops. We've given up the area where kids could ride their bicycles, all for this new school. We also gave up more green space when it was approved that they could take more than their share of the buffer zone between the street and the school. I think it's time to stop. We don't need a billboard size on a school. It can be done very, very tastefully and still represent both Cassidy's history and Jesse Franklin Taylor. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Jim Johnson, 1918 Avalon Road. Part of my concern is that it impinges on the historical designation of the Chautauqua Park neighborhood. Sign that is actually five times the, what? The required limit of a sign. They're asking for a variation of a sign that is five times larger than what is permitted. That would be more of a billboard-sized sign, and that would be more of a sign that would be appropriate to a commercial entity, and I couldn't argue if we were trying to bring in business to this entity. But a school, a small school in a small neighborhood and faced with, you can see, all of these houses along this row face the proposed sign. That house faces the sign. That house faces it. That house faces it. This house may be problematical whether they could see it or not. They're not here to speak. Anyhow, that's part of the people that it would impinge on, and they are facing. We're not here to argue about the appropriateness of the name Jesse Franklin Taylor. That's been decided a long time ago. We're just here to argue about the size of the sign. And I just don't think it's appropriate for a, what, a publicly-owned school to have a sign that large. Part of the, we don't have a, I don't think that would show, given the size of the, let's see, that one. Given the size of the space available for the sign and the sign itself, it's going to cover pretty much all of that available space on that wall. There's a window right there. You're going to have a sign that covers the wall. I really hope that you decide to hold to the original restrictions for signage on this school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Any further question? The appellant has the opportunity, three minutes for rebuttal if they so choose. Appellant wish to add anything else?
I would maybe just add that when the district decided that they would reinvest in this neighborhood here by putting a new facility there, we knew due to the size of the property compared to most of our schools that there would be challenges relative to space, and that was a reason for some of the need for a variance there in order to do some of those things, so. But the district felt very strongly about reinvesting here and putting a new facility there for the community, so with that, we would consider it an investment and not an expense to the communities.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Okay, any other further questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Thoughts or observations? Direction?
My personal opinion is that with the single letters against a brick wall, that, while I understand very well the measurement criteria for the city to determine the size of a sign, I do not think it is apples to apples. It's not lit. It's letters on a sign. I would support the request.
Any other thoughts? Is that a motion?
Seeing no opposition, I would move that.
I'll second.
Okay, very well put, Jake. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on a board, or motion and a second on the floor to approve the requested variance. All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Want to thank all of you for coming down, whether in support or opposition. Your comments are important. Thank you. Okay, that moves us to item number six, a conditional use permit request at 3409 Southwest 9th Street by QuickTrip, K-W-I-K, QuickTrip Incorporated.
This item is a request for a conditional use permit for a tobacco store selling wine and beer in a C-1 district. If you remember, last month, we had our first tobacco store come to the board for a conditional use permit back in May. The city council amended the zoning ordinance to add the tobacco store classification to the list of business types that could apply for a conditional use permit selling beer. Before that text amendment, this type of store would be considered a liquor store, even though they're only selling about 25% of their, or even though only about 25% of their overall sales come from the sale of alcohol products. And the subject property is the Tobacco Outlet Plus on Southwest 9th Street. It's in an area that's kind of a mix of commercial, some residential, and then there's a church across the street. If you remember, back in March, this item was on the agenda for a conditional use permit for a liquor store. It was continued indefinitely so that city council could pursue that text amendment. At the time... At the time, they were getting hung up because there was a church here within 150 feet, so they needed the variance to the separation distance. But now, as a tobacco store, it would be limited to driving no more than 25% of their sales from beer and wine. Here's just the layout of the building. Again, this business has been in operation for about 10 years at this location. And then, you can see the site photo was done back in March when it was originally on the agenda, but they're in the north half of this two-bay commercial business building. And then the consent map, I set the cards there, Shuri. We had one card come back from the property owner in support, and then one card from this property in opposition. So if you don't see it on the map, it's just barely within the notification area.
Are those townhouses, then, since it looks like we got one structure with a split?
Yeah, that might be a duplex.
Yeah, duplex townhouse, something.
Good point. Staff believes they have satisfied the criteria necessary for granting the conditional use permit for a tobacco store. Since they were in existence with the liquor, or the beer permit before July 1st of 2012, they are not subject to the separation distance requirement. Therefore, that variance for being too close to the church is not applicable in this instance. So we do believe they've satisfied the criteria necessary for granting the conditional use permit, so we've recommended approval, subject to nine conditions. I won't read through all of them. The first two, the one obviously is they need to keep their sales of wine and beer to less than 25% of their overall sales, and they cannot sell alcoholic liquor. And then two, they have to stay within the existing 1,937 square foot business. So the rest are just the standard conditions for this type of business. So any questions?
Don't have any right now. All right. Thanks, Bert. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant? Is the applicant here? There he is. Step right up.
My name's Ivor Hyer. I live at 1114 East McKinley in Des Moines. I'm the store leader for the store, and basically been there in operations for, like you said, at least the last 10 years. We don't come anywhere near the 25% of beer sales, because we don't even sell wine anymore, and obviously no liquor sales at all. Our current beer sales run only about 10%, 12% of our sales, so we fall under that guideline.
And Ivor, how long have you been at the store yourself?
Since May of 2009.
Okay, so you've been there five years plus?
Yep.
Very good. Anything else you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay. Any questions for Ivor? Okay. Thank you. All right, is there anybody here that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in opposition? Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. I just want to briefly lead off with a comment. My wife and I have been known to loiter at the Dairy Queen across the street from this establishment in the evenings sometimes, and pretty quiet neighborhood in there in the evenings. Some steady but not intense traffic comes and goes out of there. Never seen a problem with it. So seems like you're, seem to be doing okay there in the neighborhood. Anybody else get any observations or thoughts on that one? Anybody want to entertain a motion? Okay, motion by Linda, second by Dave. All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. All right, keep up the good work. Okay. Item number seven is a conditional use permit and variance request by Get 'N Go Convenience Stores at 3735 Hubble Avenue.
This item actually requires two appeals. There's a typo on the, in the staff recommend, or in the staff reports, but on the agenda, it's listed correctly. The first appeal is the conditional use permit for a limited food and retail sales establishment selling beer and wine. And then the second is a variance of the provision that states businesses shall not dispense alcoholic beverages from a drive-through window. The apple, or the site is the Get 'N Go on Hubble Avenue. If you're familiar with this Get 'N Go, it's unique in that they don't have gas sales. It's just a small convenience store selling groceries and beer and wine. According to audit they submitted, they are only driving 38, about 38 and 1/2% of their sales from beer and cigarettes or tobacco products. So they do meet the criteria for being a limited food and retail sales establishment. Here's a photo of the business. However, as you can see, there is a drive-up window or door on the west side of the building for, the sign here says "in-car shopping." So one of the criteria for granting this type of business, if you go back to City Code Section 134-954(c), then it says, any such, this is any conditional use permit granted by the Board of Adjustment for the use of a premises of the sale of alcoholic liquor, wine, or beer shall comply with the following. And number 3D is, any such business must comply with the following requirements. Then it says, shall not dispense alcoholic beverages from a drive-through window. So the zoning officer has determined that this drive-up lane does violate that, which necessitates the variance. Here's a, just a layout of the business up north to the top. You can see there's the doors on both the west and the east side. Drive-up, where vehicles can drive up, and then the clerk will come out and take the order, bring it to the car. Here's another photo. And like I mentioned, there's a sign here that says, "This lane for in-car shopping only." This is just showing the view from Hubble Avenue. See the Get 'N Go? They have an accessory structure to the east of the building, and then there's a pretty wide open space. This is looking at it from East Douglas Avenue. This is the drive-up lane on the east side of the building as well. This is just looking kind of southwest down Hubble Avenue.
Is it only drive-up shopping?
No, you can, there are three parking spaces here to the west of the building where people can park and go inside. And here's one more photo from East Douglas Avenue. As far as the consent maps go, we had two cards come in support, and then one card from across the street came back in opposition. Staff does feel they've demonstrated the criteria necessary for granting the conditional use permit. However, we don't feel they've demonstrated the criteria necessary for granting the variance to allow the alcohol to be sold from a drive-up window. So we've recommended denial of that variance, but approval of the conditional use permit, just the first condition would be the business shall not dispense alcoholic beverages from a drive-up window. I would just point out that if the board does not grant that variance, they could still have drive-up customers. They just wouldn't be able to sell beer to those drive-up customers, so. Condition number two would be the subject properties prohibited from selling alcoholic liquor. Number three, any sale of beer or wine shall be ancillary to a limited food and retail sales establishment where they can drive no more than 40% of their overall sales from alcohol or tobacco products. And then the rest of the conditions are just the standard conditions. Any questions?
Bert, the combined alcohol and tobacco you said is 37 and 1/2% now?
38 and 1/2.
Or 38 and 1/2%. Is that through an audit or just self-reporting by the operator?
It was, Sue Ann might have a copy of that. I think she had taken it to photocopy it. Oh, here it is. I take that off.
Okay. Okay. All right, so it's done by a CPA?
29.4% of their sales are from tobacco. 15 and 1/2 is from beer and wine only, so that totals about 38 and 1/2%.
Okay. And that's for a six-month period, it looks like?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. Bert, do you have any police reports for the area? Was that part of our additions? I can't recall if you had mentioned that or if you saw any.
Yeah, and I, it was a very, yeah. The shortlist, I didn't see any that were attributed to this business.
Item seven, okay. Okay. Within 500 feet there, maybe the apartments are a little further northeast yet, but it does get us into some other businesses in that area, right?
Yeah, and there's the new apartment complex being constructed right here.
Okay. Any other questions for Bert? All right, thank you. Okay, we'll hear from the applicant or representative of the applicant.
My name is Pete Clint with Get 'N Go Stores, 2716 Indianola Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. The, the one red there kind of surprises me. I spoke with that neighbor. I spoke with all the neighbors in the area, and most of them actually had been there as long as we have been there, and they all seemed very favorable at the time I spoke with them. One of the things that I'd like to point out is that that is a unique drive-up situation, but there's no drive-up window where people speak through an intercom. Basically, they drive up. Our clerk goes out to the vehicle. If they're wanting to purchase either tobacco or alcohol, we get their ID. We have a scanner at the cash register. We scan it to check the ID, and then we bring the product out to them, and they give us the money. There's that, that hand-to-hand exchange, just like they would come in the store. So there's really no difference there. It's, it's not a drive-up window. I mean, each side is a doorway, so whether they would park their car and walk in, or whether we would walk out to their car, there really is no difference in the transaction because we have the human contact with them. And without being able to do business that way, we have a competitor about a half a block down the street, QT, and I'm sure that we would lose our business to them. One of the things that I've come across over the years with Get 'N Go, I've been there about 30 years, and can't tell you how many folks I've run into that say, "Yeah, we grew up in that neighborhood. We love that store. We just drive through for a gallon of milk or a loaf of bread." That's, that's our highest-selling dairy store, just because people like to drive by after work, pick up a gallon of milk. When they pick up even beer, or pop, or cigarettes, they'll pick up other items. If we lose the ability to do that, then we will also lose all the crossover sales that go with it, so that's going to put us out of business. So the hardship that we would suffer there, I think, is quite severe in the fact that we'd lose our business. We wouldn't be able to continue on like that, because that's the uniqueness of that particular site. I'd also like to point out, we've been there 42 years. We have a clean record. We went back to 2002 with no beer violations. We do not sell wine or liquor, never have, and never will. We just sell beer. I know the terminology gets a little confusing because it's lumped together, but we do just sell beer. Have a lot of, a lot of moms that come in afterwards, after work, or when they're going by with the kids in the car, so they can just pick up whatever they're going to get for the children, pop, or candy, or whatever. They really appreciate being able to do that. But I just think that the human contact that we maintain with our beer or tobacco customers is every bit as much as someone that would come in the store. For that matter, occasionally we'll deny a sale because we'll see youngsters in the car. Otherwise, a lot of our stores, they'll park where you can't see the car, and someone will come in that does have an ID and buy the beer. So in a small way, they're even better off right there, because we can see exactly what's going on. When you walk up to a car, you can see everything that's in that car. So it's a lot different than a McDonald's drive-up window where you speak into an hearing com, and you drive up to the window, and you just hand your money. And we have the human contact there, and so I do really want to impress upon you that just because without that ability, without the variance, we just won't be able to continue on there. And we've been doing that so long with a clean record. So any questions?
Pete, I can remember this back to the mid-'80s. I had a friend that lived up there. When you started this in '72, did you take over someone else that had been doing it, or was this kind of a unique thing? You're like, "Hey, let's use the building," or?
What was unique about it, it started out as a dairy drive-through with groceries.
Okay.
And then Dennis Flora, that owns Get 'N Go, excuse me, he worked that himself for a few years. Once we changed it to a convenience store, we did bring in beer and tobacco. Well, they had the tobacco before, but that's the uniqueness of it, is just that you can drive through and you'd be in and out.
And where's your nearest full-service gas station convenience store to this? Your own Get 'N Go?
Our own would be over on East 29th and Madison.
Okay.
Going that way, and then to the north, we have one in Altoona.
Okay. And you don't have to answer this next question if you don't want to, but I see you on the property next door. Do you have any plans to build a station here, full service at some time, or, you know, full-service convenience store, and maybe not have that anymore?
Well, we really haven't, because that has done so well. We've had a tenant there for years and years, and they do very well.
And what was on the property next door, or the one that you own that looks pretty much vacant now? Is there something?
Actually, it's not vacant. It's a Guinea grinder-type sandwich shop. That's where it's always been, is a sandwich-type shop.
Okay.
And so that works well, but we've really been a very family-oriented business there for many, many years, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else here who would like to speak in support of the applicant? Is there anybody here who wished to speak in opposition? Okay, step right up. Just need your name and address for the record.
I'm Frank Erickson. I live directly across the street at 3749. I have lived there for 20 years. I've been in that neighborhood since 1970 in the Sharon Park area. If you look and see that Douglas is a very small, two-lane street, and there's four no-parking signs on that street. And that is where all the traffic leaves Sheridan Park area and comes back. And they come up Hubble Avenue at 40 miles an hour, and they have to make a short right, so a lot of traffic goes in front of my house and in front of that store at 40 miles an hour. And today, just since I received the letter, I live in this house right here. If you notice, I have a drive-around driveway, and the reason I have that is I used to back out. And there's, for 20 years, there've been vendors, semi-trailers parked across the street and on my side of the street. And when they park right here, when the vendor parks right there, I've had my mailbox knocked over probably nine times. I've received letters in the mail that says, "Your mailbox been blocked." I've went out and talked to these drivers and asked them to move to their side of the street or move someplace else. And Get 'N Go should have adequate parking here, but they don't use it. I have pictures here of all the vehicles in the last four days that have parked in the street. They only, not only park in the street, but they have committed dangerous circumstances for everybody. The beer trucks that he's talking about, these beer trucks park right here, here, across the street. They face the traffic that's coming at them, because they put the back end of the truck so that they can unload easier, make it easier for them to unload. If I go up to Nate's Liquor Store, there ain't nobody parked out on Hubble. If I go to the Come 'N Go, there's nobody parked out on Hubble. If I go down to the Get 'N Go, there's nobody parked in Hubble. But they use that traffic, and you have emergency vehicles that come around that corner probably 50 miles an hour. And I've seen them come around that corner with trucks parked there. And this is not, this is an ongoing problem. I have talked to Get 'N Go 20 years ago. I have called and called, and they said they would handle the problem, and the problem never gets handled. Now, if I call out there, they ask who's calling, and I say, "Frank Erickson," they say, "We'll call you back." So the problem gets ignored. So basically, what happened is they are causing a big traffic jam. I have pictures of all the traffic jam in the last seven days. I'd like to have you guys take-
Frank, if you show those to us, you'll have to leave those with us.
I will be very happy to leave them.
Okay. All right, just want to let you know.
Because they will show you where the trucks park, how they park, and like I say, they block traffic all the time. Here's the one that, here's the one of the irritations, right there. Well, let me go one more. That one right there, see the no-parking sign? You see where my mailbox? My mailbox is mounted at that parking sign because it got knocked over so much. Right there is my- Right there is my driveway, so if I have to come out of my driveway, I have to go to the other side of the street, and there's a 50-foot diesel truck that I can't see around. So how am I supposed to pull out of my driveway? And this goes on for 30 to 40 minutes every week. This has been going on for the last 20 years. And they, like you said, if an emergency vehicle come right now, that guy couldn't move fast enough. He would be in the way.
So what you're saying is, is that the trucks that are unloading for that store park right in front of your house?
Yes, yes, that's what they, they park in front of my house, so I can't get out of my driveway.
I don't understand why they can't just park in that, in the big lot since they own it.
Ma'am, I have asked this for 20 years. They have even put a low addition on, which I call the salesman's spot. But if you, if you guys remember the building, the building has an overhang, and it has a 7-foot-10 clearance. That truck has to pull in, it has to miss the parking cars on this side, and it has to miss the building on this side. That building, the end of that building's been tore off quite a few times. I've seen them replace that because the trucks have a hard time pulling in there. And like I said, I have, I have pictures in the last week of four vehicles, four, and right there, as you see, there's a car that just passed. There's a car that's trying to go around a truck, and a truck is facing that traffic.
And the truck is stopped?
The truck is stopped with its lights on. This goes on by all the, all the beer trucks.
But he's parked on the wrong side of the road?
He's parked on the wrong side of the street in a no-parking zone.
Frank, when you've had incidences like this, and it's not that I wanna have people do tattletale all the time, but have you talked to the police department about it?
I've talked to the police department, they say they'll send somebody out as soon as possible.
Okay.
In 30 to 40 minutes, it's gone. We have talked to the city.
Like the engineering department, traffic and transportation?
City, and the city says, "Call the police department."
Right, because the city has it posted as no parking, so they've, they've done their job, okay?
And this is one of the trucks that's parked. Like I said, that truck is parked in front of mine. If, if you can see, you can see the mailbox. If I look out, I cannot see to get out of my my neighborhood. And like I said, I used to have to back up.
All right.
All the neighbors in that neighborhood backs up. I used to have to back up, and I don't back up no more because I drive around. And that's what Get and Go has forced me to do, is to put a drive-around driveway so I can see to get out.
Right.
You want the picture?
Okay. All right, Frank, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments, you're a good picture-taker also. Okay, is there anybody else here to speak in opposition?
I'm Karen Erickson, and I live in the same residence, and I agree with everything he said. It is, yesterday, when I pulled out of my driveway, the beer truck was parked across the street. I could barely clear it, and just as I got about halfway past the truck, here comes a guy shooting around the truck. He couldn't see me, so we almost had a head-on collision. And it's just, it's an ongoing problem. Like Frank's out there in the middle of the dead of winter, or on a 100-degree day out trying to repair our mailbox, and it, it gets old. And it's been going on, and they just ignore, and they could put more parking over there. If they own the whole lot there, why can't they put more parking there to accommodate the trucks? They can do that, and they haven't. They're just ignoring us now. Like he said, when they, he says it's Frank Erickson, they say they'll call us back, and they don't.
Right.
So, it's just, we're tired of it.
Sure.
It's a dangerous situation.
Even if, we're, we're here today for a variance to allow alcohol to be dispensed through the drive-through window, so even if we said no to that, he might still keep a business open and have delivery trucks out there.
They should still, if I parked on either side of the street for 40 minutes and a policeman come along?
Right.
I'd get a ticket.
Right, right. We, we, we aren't the traffic board, but I just, I just wanna make that clear. You know, it appears a lot of the trucks are related to the delivery of the alcohol, at least from your photos.
Yep, yep.
So, so we can kinda, we can see how we can take that into account here in our discussion.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Karen. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Any further questions for staff? I do have a brief one. We have a neighboring lot here owned by the applicant. If he wanted to install an accessory drive, or an outer loop, or another egress, could he do that, that would serve?
Yeah, he would have to have a site plan approved by the permit center, but
Okay.
Yeah, since it's owned by them.
Right, right, so even if it served the other use on the other parcel, it'd still be okay to do that?
Right.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Since '72, they, it looks like they've been dispensing beer to drive, for people to drive up. When, when did this law take effect? Said they couldn't do it.
Erickson's 1988?
98.
98?
Okay.
I'm not sure. But since they had already been doing it, and like, I don't know if I got the title right, but the keg stand on East University is the same way, or whatever that's-
You're talking about the last stand liquor?
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's been serving that way since before 98, so.
And this would go, you know, continuously legal non-conforming, except we have that provision in the zoning ordinance that says, "Any business that receives a conditional use permit must then comply with these criteria," which is when this kicks in.
Okay. All right. Good question, Dave. Anybody else? Okay, the appellant does have three minutes for any rebuttal or comments that he would like to make.
Well, I did make this statement when I started, that I'd spoken to the neighbors, and I did speak with Frank. And at the time, I gave him my card, and Frank, I apologize, at the time, I told you we'd be happy to work with you and replace mailboxes, and that's still the case. But I've never heard from you, so I didn't know.
All right.
But I will say this, that we would be happy to work with you and see if we couldn't work a drive-around where we could, you know, park our trucks, because actually, we have as many most everyone, a lot of the vendors, whether they're the bread trucks, or other vendors, have gone to the semis, pop trucks, so it's not just the beer trucks, it is the others as well. But we would certainly be happy to entertain that, to relieve that situation, because I would certainly agree with you that it's not right to be blocking your driveway, or, or knocking your mailboxes down, so we'd be happy to work that situation out, and if you think that's, you know, doable, Eric.
Yeah, you would have to, and since you don't have gas sales, you don't even have to go to plan and zoning. Now, you may have to bring some other elements into conformance, depending on how much you're doing there.
Sure. Well, we have the room behind us there, that we could certainly do that, and would be happy to do so. Any other questions?
We may have a few. Anybody? Questions?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Pete. We'll check back with you. Okay. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
I feel that now is the time that we can make this right for these people.
Okay.
You know, I would support that even the drive-through, I understand their business, but I would like to see us let the owner of the store go back and work out a site plan with the city. I, I wanna get these trucks away from the city streets. I don't think it's right that a citizen has to put up with that for 20 years and doesn't get phone calls back, has mailboxes. That's just not right. So I can't support it as it is, but if somebody would like to, the applicant would like to continue it and work out a different arrangement for his trucks, then I would certainly take a look at that, but I mean, he brought pictures.
Yes, yes.
The pictures were dated, just a couple of days ago.
Right.
Somehow, we have to get these trucks, these delivery trucks, off of that street.
Most of the time, the issues seem to be that, well, they're serving underagers, there's loitering at the lot, it's dirty. I didn't hear any of that. I just heard, hey, we got people parking illegally, causing a traffic hazard. So if we could find a meat-in-the-middle or a little quid pro quo here, it doesn't appear that the issue is the drive-up window by itself. To maybe help all parties, and I don't know if we can do this or not, but if we were to look at granting the variance in the conditional use permit, could we put an extra item on it that the applicant shall install a XX kind of driveline with X approval site plan within the next, let's say, 18 months, or 24 months, or, or something? So we can grant the conditional use with this requirement. Would that put too much of a burden on staff for follow-up? Would that be an okay approach, rather than defer it? Because I think we've heard the issues.
I don't wanna go, I don't wanna go more than 12 months, I mean, I think this needs to be done immediately.
Yeah, you could say they need to submit a site plan within three months and begin construction within six months, or-
Right, but believe it or not, the construction season's gonna end within about four months here, so we're gonna get into a winter, and then we'd have a spring, but I suppose, not by, by next spring then.
There's a lot of construction that needs to be done. I mean, it's a big parking lot.
Right, right, but come after November 15 or so, most people don't do much paving. Like a year? Get it done within the year. What do you think, Linda?
I'd like to see it sooner, but I wanna be reasonable.
I tell you what, let's, let's bring the applicant up here.
It's only gonna get busier. This, this neighborhood, I mean, there's a lot of- They're gonna see more construction and more housing. I think it needs to be done.
We can do that fairly quickly, and we'd be happy to do it. I mean, you could make it a conditional-
If this was a meat-in-the-middle, Pete?
Variance, we'd be happy to agree to that.
Okay.
Yes.
Use the opportunity to make it good. There's a lot, you're gonna, you're only gonna get busier in this.
Sure, if you wanna stipulate, that's just fine with the variance, we'll be happy to do that. And we can do that rather quickly, it'd just be a matter of, what, Eric just giving you a site plan to?
Yeah, you'll need a pre-op.
Yeah.
I'm not, I can't answer questions about access points.
Right, right, that'll take, yeah, I have to work with engineering as well, and, okay, okay, thanks. All right. Bert, did you or Sue Ann have anything else you wanted to add?
They suggested maybe giving them a June 1 deadline. That seems to be a common deadline, that people get that way, they can begin construction first thing in the spring and be done by June 1.
He, he might do it sooner than that, but at least he'd have through that time to finish it. Okay, because maybe there'll be some plantings that go in in the spring, do the paving yet this fall, finish with plantings?
I'm just saying, he can do it pretty quickly.
So we had it done by June 1, that's 10 months away. Want something faster? You want by January 1?
I would hope that he would be a good one. I think it could have happened.
No, sorry, the hearing's closed. Okay. Motion on the table? Is there a motion on the table by anybody?
Then I would move staff recommendations for the approval of the conditional use permit for a limited food retail sales establishment. Also, grant the variance to allow alcohol to be dispensed through a drive-through window, provided the applicant gets his delivery trucks off of the street on Douglas to park, and that he provide parking in the lot that he owns to the east.
Would loading be there?
A, a delivery drive-in, off-street unloading lot. I'll second that with my additional minor verbiage there. And then there'll be a little landscaping that goes with that by, by city code requirement, correct?
Yeah, it's all percentages.
Yeah, that's okay, a little bit, okay. All right, so we've got a motion and a second on the table.
And I would hope that they would work with the owner to consider iceland losses.
I have a feeling they will, okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries 5-0, so hopefully things will be looking up for everybody. Thank you for coming down today. You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number eight, a conditional use permit request at 1016 University Avenue.
And you do have a letter opposing this from the King Irving Neighborhood in front of your chair. This item is a request for a conditional use permit for a limited food or retail sales establishment selling wine and beer in a C2 district. The subject property is a one-story commercial building on the south side of University Avenue at 11th Street. It's technically within the Chatham Park Neighborhood Association, but just across the street from the King Irving Neighborhood. There is an existing grocery store in the building called Express Grocery. It's operating in the west portion of the building. They're now wanting to add beer and wine to their list of available products there, so. Here's another photo. You can see there's actually three tenants in this. One's the grocery store, one's a hair salon, and then I forget the other, I think it's a clothing store in the east end of the building. Here's the consent map. We did get the cards from the senior living across the street to the north, and then from Anowim Housing owns the properties to the south, objecting, so. Staff looked at this, and we, I guess, analyzed it against the conditional use permit criteria. As a new limited food sales establishment selling wine and beer, they only have to provide 150 feet of separation from any church, or park, school, or daycare. They do meet that separation distance. There is a park within about 300 feet to the east, but again, they're only subject to the 150-foot separation, so that small triangular park is far enough away. We also feel that since it's along the commercial corridor of University Avenue, it's not going to cause any congestion in the neighborhood. We feel that it is adequately separated from surrounding residential uses, since it's in the east end of the building, away from these homes along 10th Street to the east. As a limited food sales establishment, they would be subject to generating no more than 40% of their sales from beer, wine, or tobacco products, so we have recommended approval just subject to the list of conditions, and the first two are the big ones. One, they shall not sell alcoholic liquor, and two, they shall not exceed 800 square feet of area within the building, and shall not drive more than 40% of their overall sales from the sale of wine, beer, or tobacco. Any questions?
Bert, was this the same location where we had some basement uses for a restaurant or lounge that came and went a time or two?
Yeah, about two years ago, the board had a I believe, a conditional use permit for a tavern that wanted to go in the basement of this, and that conditional use permit was never approved.
At the time, there was a concern there weren't enough parking spaces, and having to make a deal with Anowim for parking spaces. How is this different, that you don't see a concern for, need for parking spaces?
At that time, they were grandfathered in for the parking spaces on the ground floor, since it has always been used as retail-type uses.
Okay.
They've always been grandfathered in for that. It's just when they were adding space, or adding uses to the basement, then, that new use was-
So, and, and the only parking allowance they get here, is there amount of off-street surface parking they have, and that meets your formula and criteria then?
Well, no, they, if the current parking standards were to be put into effect, they would not meet that. They only have three off-street parking spaces on the east side of the building, but.
So where do we have parking restriction stuff here, conditions? You're, you're, you're saying because it's a continual use, they don't have to meet that?
Correct, yeah, since it's always, since there've always been retail uses.
Okay, since it hasn't ceased, I've got it now, okay. All right, yeah, it's not a change in use.
Right.
Whether there are parking concerns or not is a different thing. Okay. All right. Okay, any other questions for Bert? All right, thank you. All right, let's hear from the applicant, or the representative of the applicant. The person who wants to do this business, are they here? Good afternoon, and if you could give your name and your address?
My name is Erica Brain. 1016 University Avenue. I'm trying to, this is my first time, and then I be opened the store before, and then it's not a liquor, I need to add liquor on it, that's why I'm here for it.
Okay, so you're saying this is your first store you've ever opened? Have you ever run a convenience store or grocery store?
I have one- I have one already open now for four years.
Here in Des Moines?
Here in Des Moines, in Forest Avenue.
Okay.
Six oh nine and Forest Avenue. And then we tried to open another one in University 1016, and then we need to add the liquor, and then already we have a license for cigarette, and then we need to add the liquor, and then we apply, and then this is my first time, and then I don't know.
Okay, now you mentioned you want to add liquor, and I might be misunderstanding your intentions here.
I need to add beer and wine.
Beer and wine only, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because one of the conditions here, the staff is supporting to allow you to sell beer and wine, you've got to stay under the 40%, but they would not allow you to sell what's called alcoholic liquor then?
Yes.
And that's okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions?
I don't think we have any at the moment, so we'll check back with you in just a minute. All right, thank you for stepping up. Okay, is there anybody else here who wishes to speak in support of the applicant? Step on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Wells. I live at 1157 Fourteenth Place. I'm the acting chair for Chedon Park Neighborhood Association. We, this was brought to our attention a few days ago, and from the neighborhood standpoint, we support business in our neighborhood, but we'd like to have a chance to meet with these people and have them engage with us to tell us what their long-term plan is. Our next meeting unfortunately is tomorrow evening, so we'd like to look at the possibility of continuing this until a later date so we can have a chance to get together and talk about it.
Do you guys meet monthly?
We do meet monthly.
Okay, all right. So this just kind of hit at the wrong time by the time the agenda came out.
Exactly.
Do you work closely with Anowim and the other retirement complex here to the north that don't seem to like this?
We don't work closely with them. We are familiar with them. We're struggling to get people re-engaged, and that would be my mission to get Anowim re-engaged. And I am familiar with the community across the street with Corinthian Gardens.
Okay.
So we, you know, we will have conversation. We are also familiar and work on separate projects throughout the year with King Irving Neighborhood Association.
Okay. Guys got some questions for Susan? Okay, all right. Susan, I appreciate all your dedication to helping your neighborhood too by being an officer. I know that's a lot of work.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll have some further discussion here in a moment, but is there anybody else who wishes to speak in support?
I do, sir.
Yes, step on up. Terry, who is it?
My name is Terry Wells, 1157 Fourteenth Place, also very active in these communities up here. I would strongly urge either approval today or continuance to next month, whatever will work out the best. They were going to come to Chedon Pass this weekend. They didn't have enough supplies in the store to set up a stand and brochures and stuff. They're kind of in the, getting their store open. So we have been in contact with them. We know that they're going in. It sounds like that they want to work with the neighborhood, and we want them in our neighborhood. So a couple of things that I want to at least bring to the planning and zoning board's attention, I have talked with Joanne Muldoon from King Irving. I believe that she will have a card shortly that I will be able to either review or have or will have it as testimony. But in talking with Joanne Muldoon, my question to her was, a year ago, when Chester's went in on about 16th and University, full liquor, not just beer and wine, King Irving had no complaint. They allowed Chester's to go right in, and we're fine. Chester's hasn't caused a lot of issues, you know. They're doing business. So if King Irving has a problem with beer and wine on the other side of University, I think they need to look at their own backyard. I'm also part of the Evelyn K. Davis Center for Working Families. I'm on that board. We brought Sea Fresh in, the grocery store there. Great addition to our neighborhood. You know, things are going on there now, and they've been in business now for a couple of years. Things, looks like everybody's in the red. The workforce center's doing well. But all the communities, King Irving, River Bend, Chedon Park, all allowed Sea Fresh. They have full liquor. They sell not just beer and wine, full liquor. Now, we are working very closely with QuickTrip, who's changed corners now and who's got out of River Bend and is in Chedon Park. And, you know, we love QuickTrip. I don't want to say anything bad about QuickTrip. They support us. They helped us with our fest. They're on board. We're on board with what they're selling, but we can't always support the big business and not look after our little businesses. We really believe that the African community needs to have a place to shop, needs a place to do business. They seem to be good partners. My question for the planning and zoning today is a little bit different. I strongly, like number five, says no loitering signs, but there are actually three businesses there. And I don't want you to put undue influence on the African grocery store when there's a barber shop and a beauty salon. So I think we need to be very aware in number five that, you know, if I'm getting my hair done and I want to run out and have a cigarette or whatever, I, you know, I want to go out and get some fresh air because the perm solution is smelling, I mean, so I would like to maybe strike number five or say we need to put down all three businesses. If you go up to Chester's, which I mentioned earlier, I don't believe there's a no loitering sign. In fact, they're selling cell phones now in the parking lot, and they've got people loitering. If they're violating the loitering, then maybe I need to call planning and zoning or somebody in City.
Call zoning enforcement.
Okay, zoning enforcement, I'm sorry. But there is, again, it's not a complaint, but I don't believe Sea Fresh had a loitering requirement. I don't believe QuickTrip. In fact, QuickTrip has picnic tables out there for people to sit on. So I just want us to be careful with number five. The other one that is really concerning to me is this illumination of the parking lot. We've had businesses there for probably thirty-some years. I remember back in the day, in the eighties, there was a bar and a restaurant underneath, and I guess it had been open off and on. And we had this lighting issue, and I thought it was cleared up years ago. There's not been crime. I talked to Burnell, and it doesn't seem like there's been, in fact, most of the calls come from the Anowim Housing. Not from the grocery store or the hair salon, but people at Anowim Housing have domestic arguments or parties in that parking lot. I believe that parking lot is already well-lighted. I almost would say that if you want to add lighting there, you're going to affect the neighbors to the east and the Anowim Housing. This property, these folks are facing university.
Right.
They're not using the back. There's not a bar downstairs where the new owner came in, closed that whole back off. The three businesses all face in the front. As you see with this picture, there's parking on the side, but even if you put a car or two behind, I don't know if it's legal, if there's spots back there. I don't think we have a picture of that right now.
All right. Terry, I'll ask you to kind of wrap up your comments here. You've got five minutes.
Okay, well, I would either ask you to go ahead and approve. I don't think this is going to be a problem until they violate one of the restrictions. I think we let them do business. We want them to flourish just like any other business. I know Chedon Park's not really against it. At worst, continue it so they can come to a meeting, but I already believe they're going to be at our meetings and participating.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
All right, it took a while, but you see.
That's all right, that's all right. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in support? Is there anybody wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, I guess we don't need a rebuttal. There's no opposition. Any further questions for the applicant? I would just have one question, if you want to come back up here just briefly. Could you tell me, what are your business hours, the days of the week you'd operate, and then what hours on those days?
You mean the new one or the old one?
Like Monday, Tuesday, as to operate the store, what days of the week? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and how late?
Monday until Saturday.
All right, so you're open Monday through Saturday. You're not open on Sunday?
I open on Sunday.
You are open on Sunday?
Yes.
Okay. What hours on Monday through Saturday would you be open?
It's going to be nine to 11:30.
Okay, so nine AM to 11:30 PM, and what about on Sunday?
Sunday is going to be, because I'm going to church, maybe it's going to be 11:30 to 11:30 in the morning to 11:30 evening time.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yep.
So according to our documents, your store is kind of described as an express grocery store.
Yes.
What kinds of things do you sell? Do you sell things that are specifically African, maybe cultural kinds of things? Or are you kind of just a milk and bread and cheese kind of store?
We're going to mix everybody, African, American, together.
So you're, there's going to be some ethnic products?
Ah, yes.
Particularly African kinds of things?
Ah.
Okay.
Good question. Okay, any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming back up. Okay, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. What are the thoughts here?
I agree with the staff recommendations.
Okay. Staff recommendations are to approve it with certain conditions, and you've heard the hours? Okay?
I would make a motion to approve.
We've got a motion, motion to approve staff recommendations and the list of eleven conditions that go with it. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Give you a cautious vote of approval here on my account. Do it good, do it well, so. And you'll need to check in with city staff tomorrow on your other permits you may need. Okay, that brings us to item number nine, a variance at 1603 East 12th Street. And go ahead, Eric, I'll be right back.
All right. This request is for retention of basically excess driveway area within the front yard setback. It's a corner parcel at East Washington and East 12th Street, and the way intended of our ordinance is that only a certain percentage of your front yard area can be paved with the area used for off-street parking. Single-family and two-family dwellings do allow use of the front yard for off-street parking, but do limit the amount of paving that can occur there. And this was constructed over that amount. And so they're coming in to ask for relief to go 472 and a half square feet over the maximum allowed of 337 and a half square feet of area. It looks like it's about 25% of the actual front yard area based on a calculation of the, using a corner lot. There, let's see, I thought I had a little sketch here too that shows how they want to. We're reviewing this, and one of the concerns that we get with, when this occurs, is that you can see in the photo that the paving is brought flush to the sidewalk area, but not where the actual approach is. And the approach is designed with an additional thickness, and so is the sidewalk where the approach is at, so that it doesn't break up. The concern is, is when you're putting that parking adjacent to portions of the public sidewalk that aren't that thick, there's a tendency for those vehicles to drive over that area, and then that's the part of the sidewalk that breaks, not the part that's designed adequately. So staff wants to ensure that we sort of revise what's going on there, and that's actually going to involve removal of some parking area. They've actually proposed, this is actually a drawing here that would show how we would sort of flare that or taper that back to get to the approach. Now, they widened the approach, but instead of bringing it square here as it's been done, this part would actually be removed, and we'd want to see some shrubs put into that area. They've agreed to that. I think there's a email that was handed out, or if not, it's in the cards getting passed around, that indicates support by that, for that by the neighborhood. So just a slight revision to what ended up happening, cutting this back so that the maneuvering goes into the area of the approach where it should, and it won't crack up the sidewalk, so. We did get cards in opposition.
Okay.
And two in favor that should have been passed around as well.
Okay.
I don't think they've made it.
It didn't get past Dave.
Oh, it's coming out.
Yeah, I decided to change things up a little bit.
Okay.
Apologize.
It would have stalled out after Sheree when I stepped away.
All right, so we'll leave it here.
So you can blame that on me changing the direction of flow.
No, we'll just blame it on Dave because he's not here. Okay.
If you have any questions.
Okay. Now, did we not put this on consent because there was a card of opposition then? Or you had a chance to talk to the applicant?
Well, at the time, I'm not sure when we, you know, when we set the agenda, we were sure of how we were going to approach this, but as long as the owner's agreeable to what we're recommending, I think we could have perhaps considered that for consent.
Okay. All right. Anything else you want to add, Eric?
I don't have anything.
Okay, any questions for Eric? Okay, all right. Let's hear from the applicant or representative of the applicant.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Marcelino. My address is 1603. I speak a little English too.
You're doing just fine.
I have my son, he speaks for me.
I think you're doing fine.
Give your name, too.
Hi, my name is Jackson. I live at 1603 East 12th Street, Des Moines, I was of Code 50316. And just, my dad wanted me to share a little story here with you guys, you know, of what we've done. He purchased this house, I have an image here.
We'll zoom.
We purchased this house early 2012, and as you can see, you know, it wasn't in condition like, you know, it is now. And the inside was, you know, a little, you know, it wasn't really in good condition. So, you know, my dad spent like about a year fixing up the house, both inside and out. And now that he has got it, you know, fixed up, a lot of the neighbors, you know, drive by, even some people we don't even know too, you know, they'll honk the horn and, you know, they'll scream, you know, like, what a good job you guys have done, and they'll thank us for, you know, making the neighborhood look better by improving it. When, the only, the only problem was though, was our parking space. As you can see right here, this is the only little bit that we had available. And when it would rain or it would snow, you know, it'd get pretty muddy. And when we would pull out, it would leave a trail on, you know, on the road. And, you know, that was just something that didn't really, you know, look good. And so, and then also, for parking space, we use Washington Avenue, and that's, you know, we'll park the cars out in front there. But that is a road that's used a lot by the school buses, and twice, a police officer has asked us, if possible, to, you know, remove the cars from there and, you know, have them in their, in their parking space, but, you know, the house itself didn't... but, you know, the house itself didn't have that at the time, and so my dad wanted to, you know, went ahead and, he poured that, and we did, he does own three cars, and so, you know, he needed space for, you know, to fit the three cars in there, and the only thing, though, is, yeah, you know, the approach, we're wanting to see if they'll allow us to keep that at 24 feet, and then let the actual parking space be 30 feet wide, and we do agree to what the staff had said, to cut out that little, that little corner right over here, to prevent, you know, other problems. The only thing that my dad wanted to add to that is, because, you know, he's, you know, put quite a bit of money into this, and to not have to cut that piece out, if possible, to allow us, or to allow him to make some kind of, I'm not sure what I would call it, but, you know, just like, like a, not really a garden, but, you know, just, you know, put something there, you know, like stack bricks, and then fill that in with dirt to, you know, plant...
Like a raised planter bed?
Yes, something like that, yes. Talk about that, instead of, you know, having to cut that, you know, piece out, but, you know, that's only if you guys would be able to allow that, you know, otherwise, he's fine with what you guys have decided on.
And I had to step away for just a moment, but just to clarify, so you did pour the driveway without getting any kind of building permits or anything like that?
He got, he did get a permit for it, and I, we couldn't find the copy of it, but they, I think they allowed us to have a 20-feet-wide approach.
Right.
And then they wanted to reduce that down to 10 feet, for some reason, I'm not sure why.
But maybe there was some misunderstanding on your end about how much you could pave on the backside of the sidewalk, how wide it could be, then?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, anything else you want to add, Jackson?
None.
Okay. Any questions for Marcelino or Jackson?
I have a question. This is a pretty good-sized driveway, I think more like a parking lot. You're not gonna use this, this is not for work-related things, this is just for your own personal use? Or do you have a business that you're running?
He's saying he's just gonna be using it for, you know, personal parking, and the reason he, you know, he wanted it, you know, big enough is for the three cars to fit, 10 feet for each car, and that adds up to the 30 feet wide that he has already poured in there.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Do you, what do you do occupationally? Do you, do you do skilled labor, or do you run a family business, or what do you do?
He has a home cleaning service.
Home cleaning?
That he has, yeah.
And do you have vehicles that you use specifically for that?
Yes, he's got two cars that have...
So would you be parking those two cars in this space also?
Yes, two of them would be there.
So that's two out of the three vehicles that you own?
Yes.
Are used for your business, for your cleaning business?
Are those cars also used for personal use?
Like, you know, are you meaning like to, like, you know, like...
Like, if you drive the car during the day for the cleaning service, would you drive it at night to go to a movie, or drive it on the weekend to go to Walmart, or, you know, use it personally as well?
It does get used personally.
Okay. Do the vehicles have any markings on them that say, you know, Marcelino's Cleaning Service or anything?
They, they used to have the name of the company on it.
Okay, just, I mean, just, just to kind of, for full disclosure here, one of the concerns can be, is if you've just got commercial vehicles, and you're paving, parking for commercial vehicles in a residential neighborhood, that can be an issue. So we'd have to discuss that a little further, versus, you know, if you do some business with it, but you also use it personally, can't really sort that one out, so, that may be something we need to talk about. One of the people who wrote a letter here says there's a concern that you're storing a lot of chemicals in the house for the business, is that also true?
He has, in the, because the business is, you know, fairly small, it's not really big yet.
Right.
And he, he does have some chemicals, but they're like, you know, in like, those little gallons, and he's got about, like, four of those, in like, it's like, I guess it's considered a little office.
Yeah.
And, you know, he's got it in there, and so, but like, it's not, you know, something...
Okay, and again, I think maybe the concern with the comments, or my questions, are, if you're running a business out of your home, sometimes you may need a home occupation permit to do that, and that may be something that will have to be discussed with staff here in a little more detail.
Okay.
So, so sometimes you have one issue, but it can bring up a couple other questions or concerns. So, any other questions for Jackson or Marcelino?
Other employees that come to the house. He has two workers that come to the, that come to the house, and they leave their cars there, when, and then they, they would leave in the company cars.
Okay, so are they parking on the street, or parking in the parking area?
Right now, they use, we use the street.
Yours in the street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 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 Alright, we may check back with you boys in just a little bit, then. Sound okay? Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So we've heard from the applicant. Can we hang on just a second? Okay, alright, are there any other folks to speak in support of the applicant? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Are there any further comments from staff?
Chair members of the board, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. It appears from testimony today that we're, we have a home occupation in the house.
Right.
I would suggest that this be continued for 30 days, re-notified as an application for special use permit for a home occupation in conjunction with the parking, and get everything in front of the board at one time.
If we were to do that, would you, or some folks offering assistance, be able to sit down with the applicant and kind of explain a little of this, so they know what they should be asking for, or maybe what they shouldn't be doing?
Absolutely, I've met with the applicant as we walk through this process, I'd be happy to assist him, walking through the home occupation portion.
Okay. I have a feeling that that might help us arrive at a better decision than here with this board. Okay. Okay, so, based on those comments, we can give the applicant, I'll just wait a second here until Sue Ann's done with them. We have a chance for some closing comments before we go to deliberation, so maybe after she speaks with them, we can see what they think. Okay, Marcelino, Jackson, can I get you to come back up here for just a second? Since we've had some... After you gave your testimony, since the staff had some comments through Sue Ann that they wanted to put forward, you have a chance to respond to those, and I know that Sue Ann probably just asked you if you'd be okay with, maybe we put this off for a month, you talk with staff, and maybe change what it is you're asking for and some of the conditions therein, so that we can have a better look at this next month. Does that sound okay to you?
That is fine.
Okay, alright, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so, any other questions for staff? Hearing none, close the public portion, go to board deliberation. What do you folks think?
I would make a motion to continue item, item nine for the variance until next month's meeting, so the applicant can visit with the zoning department and figure out their, what's really happening here.
Right, right. Yeah, we have a fair amount of paving there, depending on how they're using that paving, I think that could influence maybe what our decision might be on the allowances for the paving. I'll second that. Motion and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, our next item is item number 10, a conditional use permit request at 3120 East 14th Street. I believe that's the El Palomino, if I'm correct.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Keeps us on our toes.
Keep it rolling. He's confusing me.
I get this when I pass potatoes around the table, too.
Right.
Ebb and flow.
This property is at East Tiffin and East 14th Street, just a little bit north of Grandview University area, but south of the East Gate area, so, kind of right in that transition between those two major land use areas. There was a, historically, there was a request in the early part of 2000s for a tavern here that was denied, it was, I think it was the first conditional use that was denied. I just remember that off the top of my head.
14 years?
At the time, because it was a little bit surprising at the time for me, but, this is a, basically, it is a grocery store, it is an ethnic grocery store. The activity around it, in observation, was that, you know, it doesn't produce an ordinate amount of traffic, even though it's on a major traffic corridor, it does back on to residential, but it's the type of use that serves a neighborhood from a residential perspective. It's not something I don't think that would necessarily attract from a greater regional location. It's the type of business that's there to serve the immediate neighborhood, so, from that standpoint, it's appropriate that it's located adjacent to a residential area. Pretty much everything along the East 14th Corridor in that area does back on to residential areas, but provide that transition for the residential areas to the busy corridor, so, in that sense, it actually serves as that kind of separate, separation or buffer between the neighborhood. The interior layout indicates that a fairly limited area within their walking cooler for beer. Most of their shelving is devoted to other products, so, they're a full-range type of grocery, and not, you know, a high percentage of floor area is not devoted to sales of alcohol or tobacco, so, from that standpoint, we believe that the volume is not an issue here as well, that we're not, we're not even approaching 40% in all likelihood. They're doing beer only, they've only done beer only since the mid 2000s here, so, in reviewing all the special permit criteria, we believe that they're abiding by all of those criteria, and that the board should be able to find that they conform to those and can grant that conditional use. Since it was in existence, there's no separation issues, we aren't enforcing any separations in this case. So we're recommending in favor, subject to, basically demonstrating that they're staying below the 40% with documentation of an audit to the zoning administrator. We also want to only allow beer and tobacco sales, they haven't been requesting to sell wine, so we'll ask to limit them to just the beer and the tobacco. We want to ensure that that stays as a secondary type of use to the overall grocery use, and that their receipts don't exceed 40%. Other than that, we're looking at the same standards that we're asking of all conditional use, conditional use granted for limited food sales, so, we still have that provision that allows this to be brought back to the board if it starts to develop a pattern of operating as a nuisance. Is there anything specific you want to know about this location?
I have a question. I know that we've got residential pretty close by. One of the cards talks about the concern with the smell of the garbage. Where is there, where do they keep their, their garbage bins, and are they covered? Are they right next to these people's house? Is there something we can do while they're here to improve that?
You know, I didn't make any specific observations to that effect, just trying to see if they even have enclosures. Looks like their enclosure is kind of at the southwest corner, right here.
Yeah, maybe where those bollards are.
Yep, they have bollards, so that they're not smashing the doors, or...
I mean, and this is just a, they're not like throwing food out, it's not like it's a restaurant, or they don't serve, do they, do they...
Well, they have, if they have fresh meat and things like that, and they're disposing of perishable grocery items like produce and food, that can become an issue, so it might be a matter of the frequency that they're servicing their, their...
I mean, it's a pretty good-sized parking lot, it looks like.
Yeah, I mean, it appears that they have a conforming enclosure, you know, from, if we were gonna do a site plan, you know, we'd want to have a block enclosure with, you know, metal gates, that type of thing. So, I'm reluctant to say just shift your enclosure, I mean, that certainly could be a condition, but I think maybe operationally, it might be, make more sense if they service it more often, so that it doesn't become that type of problem, if that's really the only thing that's the problem.
But how can, how can that happen? I mean, it's kind of like that neighbor who sits their garbage cans as far away from their property, but then close to their neighbor's property.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta be careful, because customers don't want to have, to deal with that coming in the door either, so it's a...
Yeah, but...
It's...
Right.
I mean, you gotta put it someplace.
Right.
We, we don't want you to put it, you know, right in somebody's front door, or...
So Eric, we don't know what their schedule is in terms of solid waste pickup?
No, no.
How frequently, because I'm just wondering...
That wouldn't have been on our radar for selling beer, to be honest with you, so...
Right.
It's a good, you know, it's a, it's a good thing to bring up, and you could sort, I think you could ask them to, one of the things in the conditional use is to put appropriate receptacles for the patrons to use, but if they have kind of this overall issue, I think it's fair to ask them, you know, is there some ways that you can operationally, you know, service this more often, so it's not a problem for your neighbors? Any other questions?
There was one comment about how the cars park right up against the fence and have smashed into the neighbor's fence, and if you look at, if you can put that one picture up, that kind of shows their east parking, and the residential lot to the east, the picture will show, it appears that that wooden fence may, well, I'm trying to see who that belongs to.
Well, if the finish side is towards the neighbor, so I'm assuming it's on this property, but, it looks like they've repaired it, too.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think they'd want to get their own fence smashed into either, but it looks, apparently they're running into somebody's fence here once in a while, but I don't see any parking stops, or bumpers, and maybe that would be...
When I was there, everything looked like it was in good repair.
Sure, yeah, but generally.
So even if, you know, you're gonna have those mishaps in every...
Right.
...commercial site, so, the question is, how well do they maintain it when it happens?
Right. Okay. Alright, any other questions for Eric? Alright, thank you. Alright, let's hear from the applicant, or representative of the applicant. Hello?
My name is Armandina Mayorga, I represent a tienda mexicana El Palomino.
Can you pull that microphone down towards you just a little bit? Go ahead and grab it and pull it towards you, speak into that, thank you.
My name is Armandina Mayorga, I represent a tienda mexicana El Palomino, 3116 East 14th Street.
Mm-hmm.
Any question? I'm not speaking English very well, and here's my...
I think you're doing just fine. Any questions for Ms. Mayorga?
Actually, we were, my name's Jose, I'm actually representing her.
Sure.
We were discussing in regards to the garbage, the garbage actually... The garbage actually is, in that sense, you can't really see it. There's a previous picture in there. Actually, in this picture itself, if you look in this, like in this corner following this way...
When we talk about controlling litter as part of the conditional use, it can be, because we want to, the site's got, it can't present a hazard to the surrounding uses.
So, that's the southeast corner?
It's in the back corner of that, that's where the garbage is. And it is, it is unblocked.
Okay.
It is unblocked and the garbage does come two times a week.
Twice a week, okay.
Twice a week.
Okay.
So, that's the only thing would be helping that, but for that, the garbage wouldn't even be full enough to be getting it.
Okay. And Jose, just for the record, can we have your last name and your address?
Jose Garcia, twelve sixty-three, East Thirty-Fifth, Des Moines, Iowa.
Okay. Anu, you got that one? Okay. Okay. Yeah, there's been some concerns expressed by some of the neighbors to the east, and I don't know, we, we may hear from them, we'll have to see here, but, you know, concerns about people kind of hanging around in the parking area, littering, stuff gets on their property, people maybe even do things on their property that, that aren't very nice. Do you try to watch for that, or do you go out and clean up every day, or...
There is, they actually clean their parking lot in regards to, to the outside mainly on a, like whenever they see stuff out or not on a weekly basis. And the, the one thing that they could consider of the littering could be, there's a taco shop that is to the left of that.
Okay.
And that is really close to that, to the parking lot of where they're at. That could be, that could be some of those concerns.
Is that a physical restaurant, or is it a mobile food vendor?
It's a mobile food.
Ah, okay.
It's a food trailer.
And it's right, it's right close to it.
Okay, so, so maybe there's some stuff blowing around? Yeah, I, I think permits for those establishments require that they have ways to get rid of their own trash too, so.
And that could be another thing for the food, I mean, who knows?
Right. But if it does blow onto your property, then once it's there, it's litter on your property, you know? I'd say at a minimum, you'd want to keep an eye on that. What, what are the hours of operation of the store?
The hours of operation are eight AM to nine PM, Monday through Sunday.
Okay, so you're closed by nine every night?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Step right up.
Andy Burton with Eichner Properties, thirty-eight, thirty-nine Merle Hay Road. Just happened to be here on another matter, but, but I think I can clarify a couple of questions you've got.
Okay.
On the site plan here, you can see where the dumpster enclosure is, is right in this corner here. The complaints about trash and the fence and that, unless there's something I don't know about, those are historical issues that have been overcome.
Right.
There's a full concrete dumpster enclosure with gates and everything that we put in when those complaints about the trash arose a couple of years ago, where the tenant actually put in at their own cost. The site was dictated by city staff as to where it was placed based on the building permit that we had to get for that. The fence issue was a case of the neighbor directly behind, and I don't know if you've got the picture of the wooden fence here?
Yeah.
Newly acquired that home, there was a metal fence there that from time to time, snowplows or, or other things were hitting that fence accidentally, or customers would pull in and dent the fence, bend the fence. And the, working with the neighbor and the tenant, the tenant at their own cost constructed a whole new wooden fence across the, the face of that property even though that is on the neighbor's property. So, they did that with their own labor and, and their own cost for materials. And as far as I know, since that was done eighteen months ago or so, there have been no other issues with the fence. So, again, the neighbors have my number, they know how to get ahold of us if there's issues. The store's always been over backwards. It's usually a language issue as to, if there's a misunderstanding about something, so...
Okay, good. I'm, I'm glad to hear you're trying to work with folks. Excellent. Any questions for Andy? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Anybody here? Okay. All right, hearing none. Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
I would move staff recommendations.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to approve staff recommendations. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, keep things looking good there and hope you do well with your business.
Okay, that brings up item, both items eleven and twelve have been removed from the agenda, so that will bring us to item number thirteen, a variance and exception request at thirty-eight oh one Merle Hay Road.
And I think, did Burt put a letter in front of you from the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association on this item? If not, I'll pass it around with the cards so that you have it.
You guys give us so much stuff. Yes. Date of July sixteenth.
This is a property you have had recently on your agenda in the last couple of years when they developed a new commercial center at this location, the northeast corner of Merle Hay Road and Douglas Avenue. It's now a tenant commercial strip center with, it took, took over where, I think it was a dental office and a BP Amoco service gas station that it took over. And they did come to you previously to allow signage. There's two directory pole signs at their entrances off of each street, and then they had a, what I would call kind of a unique type of sign design here that was a three-dimensional type sign that they had to get relief for because of the way our ordinance reads with regard to signs having only two parallel faces. We don't allow three-dimensional signs by right, so usually that requires some kind of relief or a PUD or some, something special in order to be able to allow that. So, here you actually see, not counting the Burger King, that is what's there now as a tenant directory sign. And it's ground mounted, the width of the sign and the base support, you know, are in, in alignment there, so we would actually consider that within our monument sign standards in terms of how it's defined. And then this would extend above it. So, the situation here is that they're trying to gain exposure for the drive-through restaurant because of the way the traffic comes. They don't see it apparently immediately as they're driving from Merle Hay. This building projects out in front of the center, so the, the drive-through restaurant is right in this part of the building, and so they don't see it, the actual building sign on the front. There's a, you know, a smaller version of their identification sign on each of these directory signs in here, but those again aren't highly visible, so they're looking to put their iconic logo on a projection above the freestanding sign. That pushes it above the overall height for freestanding signs that are within the front yard setback, and it exceeds the overall area basically. Plus, it's three-dimensional, so it again has to get that variance for a sign that doesn't have only two parallel sign faces. So, there's kind of three things going on here. Again, staff has evaluated this. Overall, we see what their motivation is and why they're asking for it, but again, there's businesses all over the city which have these types of signs. Here's an actual photo of it so you can see. It's not a, it's a, you know, nicely designed sign, it's well-maintained, well-kept, it's attractive. And that's the one in place, so this would extend above that. But when we look at the variance criteria from the perspective of is there really an unnecessary hardship that would say that yes, you should grant this under the criteria for that? You know, would, would any other use be able to occupy the Burger King tenant space and have less signage, for example? So, we're, staff has taken a conservative view of this under the variance criteria, and we are not able to find that it meets the variance criteria, so... While we, again, while we do understand the, the motivation, we're not able to support it. But I think you're going to see that the neighborhood has sent a letter in support, and they were working with the, the owner, I think throughout all this process of developing this site. I think they have, you know, some understanding of what, how the usage of the site interacts with the other commercial businesses nearby and so forth, so I think there's probably somebody here to speak to that as well.
Okay, any questions for Eric? Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon. Rich Eichner, three hundred Walnut Street, Des Moines, Iowa. I own the property and, as Eric has alluded, this is an extremely challenged site, and Burger King has kind of worked heroically to try to make it work with existing signage, and so comes to you after essentially three years of operation. And this is actually the second franchisee. The first franchisee built the, built out the store, operated the Burger King restaurants for several years, and then sold a year ago to a new franchisee who has come in and revamped services and added uniforms and upgraded services and whatnot, and, but still finds it's a challenged site. I brought just some historic things so you can quickly visualize and understand what's happened here. This is what the corner looked like before we started the development, and as you can see, there is, is quite a bit of clutter on the corner, is a polite word to, to call it. We had a gas station removed, we had underground tanks, we had about fifty truckloads of contaminated dirt we had to haul off because of the gas station. And here's just another view of the same property from a different angle. It was not a, not an attractive site. One of the things that's, that's interesting is that there are medians running all up and down Merle Hay and over to Fifty-seventh Street. So, it's, it's a difficult site to get in, to get into. Here is a, a picture of, let's see, get Burger King in there. One of the issues Burger King has is they have a fairly narrow width. They go deep, it's a ninety-foot deep space, but they don't have a lot of, of frontage. Given their corporate responsibilities to Burger King, they couldn't even put Burger King across in front of the store. There may be some small letters along the top edge of the, of the overhang, but the, the iconic Burger King had to be on the face of the building. Burger King, for reasons known to them and not understood by me, has a very dark color, so it's actually black metal corrugated metal going up and down, which looks okay in the daytime. And here's an actual photo, that was the design, here's the photo. So, there, there's not a lot of visibility in the front of the store. And as you go to an angle... Hope you have no stickers there. Click it out somewhere. Okay, when you go to an angle, here you're standing essentially at the end of the building, and you can hardly tell that Burger King is there. You go to night, it gets even worse, you've got the, the logo opened up, but that's about it. When you start looking at the overall site, and we'll have to probably adjust the camera a little bit, when, when you're, if you're southbound on Merle Hay and trying to access this site, and let's say you want to go to Burger King, the turn lane starts about at Goodyear is where the turn lane starts. So, if you're driving south on Merle Hay, as soon as you cross Madison, you have to be over in the left lane so you can curve into that, that turn lane if you're going to turn at the traffic light that, that the mall and Banker's Trust and ourselves installed here. At that point, from the corner, this is about two hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and sixty feet, you've got four hundred feet at thirty-eight, thirty-nine, you've got another two hundred and sixty or so up to, for Banker's Trust property. You're almost a thousand feet from the corner at the time, and when you're driving, you have to start to make your decision if you're going to enter the property at this point. If you don't enter the property at that point, you can come down to Merle Hay and Douglas and make a U-turn, which is lawful in the city of Des Moines, but I've not seen very many people making U-turns at Merle Hay and Douglas, and my recommendation is that you not do that. On any picture you see, you will see lots of traffic, there are always cars at that intersection waiting for the light to change. If you're trying to get into Burger King at that point, you try to make the left turn, you make the left turn, and then the median continues over to Fifty-seventh Street. I have seen people making U-turns at Fifty-seventh Street trying to get into Burger King. We entered, we added, through a lengthy process, a driveway here to get onto Fifty-seventh Street, worked with the neighborhood association to get their support, but the drivers always know that, so they don't come on down here, get in, and come around in a logical way. So, we see people making U-turns, they'll turn into this lot, which we have removed the existing improvements so that we're ready for development on this lot. It'll be a little easier once this lot's developed because we will have a driveway across the front which will relieve some of this U-turn traffic. But in any event, poor Burger King is sitting down here kind of hard to get to. That's basically the same thing. When Burger King came to us last fall, what they proposed at the time was this kind of an operation, more than five-foot button logo on top. As you drive down the street, there are certain logos, McDonald's logos come to mind where you have the iconic arches. They don't have to be very big, but you see them because it's such a recognizable thing. In Burger King's case, it's their button logo of the Burger King button. And they came with this design wanting to, to do this on the two pole signs that are on each corner of the property. We talked to them for, and they actually were coming down to, to file a, a permit request, and we said to them, you know, you better slow down, you better talk to the neighborhood association because they're nice people, but they have been adamant about pole signs. And as you know, Merle Hay Neighborhood Association is quite, has been a leader in the effort to regulate signage. So, we started talking to the neighborhood association and over several months, got to the point where the association decided they didn't want signs on top of those poles. Obviously, if you're coming from the north, this would be a preferable sign because you might be able to see that in time to turn in at the traffic light. But the neighborhood association said, no, we don't want, we don't want that, that's not, we don't think that's a, a good idea. And so, the next, they, they eventually came back with a suggestion that this sign be added, which is a three-foot square sign on top of the, what is essentially a nine-foot sign, but it, it curves out, so you have about eleven feet. And the concern of Burger King was that almost looks, I mean, it's just disproportionate, it almost looks like somebody left something they weren't supposed to leave. Burger King explored a couple of options, they explored an option that looked like this with their iconic thing, thinking that something could, could turn and be a two-sided sign. Obviously, that's problematic for the, for the city and the ordinances. I have an internal picture you don't need to see. And eventually came back and said, well, we'll do the corner signs, as much as we'd rather do the pole signs, we'll do the corner sign and to, to work with the neighborhood association, but we'd like to have a five-foot sign, which is a little more proportionate, it's still only forty-five percent of the width of the, the, the base, and it's extreme. And obviously, after further discussions, the neighborhood association said we can't do a five-foot sign, and eventually we got to a four-foot sign, which was agreeable to both the association and to Burger King. And so, as a result, the proposal before you is for the four-foot sign, which will, is before you. It comes with the neighborhood association's recommendation. This tenant has worked for months with the association, I congratulate Jason Pullman and his association for finding a solution and trying to moderate what obviously are very difficult issues, especially in the light of the work in the last year over, overall signage. So, we want to encourage the tenants to work with the associations, and with associations and the tenants we reach agreement. And particularly, this particular association, which I think is more sensitive to signage than almost anyone else in the city, it is our request and belief that it's an important thing to do. Burger King's volume is running about thirty percent below what it should be for the site, and so the hope is that this signage will be sufficient to, to do it. I did have one minor quibble with the calculation. I think the staff has calculated signage squaring this up to the corner. Actually, this is a four-by-four sign, so it adds sixteen feet to the calculation. So, I believe that the request that said for ninety-four feet is actually for sixty-three feet. My concern being if you approve the ninety-four feet, someone else could come in the future and square that whole area off. square that whole area off. And I don't think that's our intention. It is not our request. And I think just for the sake of future hair pulling, you probably should limit it to the, the actual sign that is being proposed to you today. And I'd be delighted, I'm sure I've forgotten something, but for expediency, I'll respond to any questions you have. Thank you.
Questions for Rich?
Yeah, I've got one quick. Rich, what is the inside seating capacity of that Burger King? Do you know right offhand?
I don't know for sure. I think it's about 65. La, do you know?
Yeah, about 65.
55 or 65?
55 people. Okay. Because it is the smallest Burger King I have ever seen. I happen to be going out to Merle Hay, and, and I had, I didn't see it as I was traveling north. I did see it as I was traveling south.
How did you get to it?
I, I was coming down Douglas, and then I turned to the right, missed it, went shopping, came back. You know, I don't even remember. It's very tedious out there.
It is.
Yeah. I don't even remember. Actually, you know what? I didn't actually pull into it. I just saw it visually coming back. I didn't even attempt. That's why I don't remember.
And that's, that's a common refrain, unfortunately. And we're trying to give them some more visibility. Again, my personal view is the top of the pole signs, give them more visibility, but I understand that's more than what the, the city or the association is comfortable with. And so we've worked very, very hard over many months to find an accommodation that would give them some more presence on the corner. The other thing I would say about this, this sign, as you recall from the aerial, the Merle Hay sign on the opposite corner is very tall and, and large and multiple, multiple signs on it. And this helps anchor that, so you have a four corners of a very important intersection in the city of Des Moines. And I think it's important to, to, you know, have some presence there of businesses and, and would be different than if you were in the middle of a block somewhere, down the street somewhere, so.
Rich, just kind of help me work through this. For the signage that's already present on the property, we've got the, the pole sign that's on the Douglas Avenue frontage that does say, there's Burger King and Burger King Drive-Thru on that. Then we do have what I'm going to call the round monument sign, which we're kind of looking at here on the Merle Hay side. And then on the building itself, is there just one button logo on the west facade? Or is there one on the north, too?
Well, the north is between two buildings, so...
Right, right.
I don't think there's any signage on the north.
Okay. And I know exactly where this is, but I'll be honest with you. With, if I'm driving north on Merle Hay, and I did this the other day, I'm like, I, I know where it's at, but it's just difficult, it's difficult to me to get in and out of there. And I went to the KFC. If you had to do this all over again, I love your plaza, but would you locate a fast food, quick-in, quick-out convenience type thing in that bay? Or would you put it somewhere else?
That was the only place to put it.
Okay.
If you think about it, if you have a drive-up lane...
Right.
Either in the back of the building, or you're on the north side of the building.
Right, right.
Where you're on a, on a, on a front. So it was a difficult site that...
Yeah. To me, no matter how much signage we would give someone, I, I just see there's, there are some things that just, I'm not saying it's inherent because of the property, but just because, you know, if I was going to Anglo International, we remember how close they used to be. By God, I'm going there no matter what. In fact, I had orders to go there. But if, if I go to a destination store, I'm going to go there. But you're probably always going to have an issue with this location with the amount of traffic that comes through there, just because of the very things you mentioned.
Yeah. And I, and I think that's the hardship, but I also recall what was there, and that's part of the reason I started there.
Oh, yeah.
It's such an improvement for the neighborhood and such an important part of improving the whole Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. I think we've done tremendous work.
But if Sun Tan City runs into this, or Mattress Firm runs into this, gee, we're not meeting our sales. Are you going to be supporting them to have more signage on the property as well?
I haven't had any discussions with any other tenant. Obviously, US Seller has great signage because they have two faces.
And they're in the corner.
They're in the corner.
But we also have granted...
And Sun Tan City is, I'm sorry?
We've also granted some variances already on this property for signage. So this is going to be a second variance if it's approved. So I'm just kind of looking for the medium of, of when we've got enough signage that you and your tenants are, are okay here. Or, or how far we can stretch that.
Yeah. I, I don't think you stretch any further. And as, as I think I just mentioned, I think you actually changed the request from the 94 feet as specified so that you don't get into that situation.
Right, right. So everybody will be happy.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to help you, you know, put some, some parameters on the, on the signage.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions for Rich? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant?
Chairman Penn and members of the board, Jason Pulliam, 2113 52nd Street. I'm speaking as president of the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. First, I'd like to thank Rich Eichner and his staff for all of their diligence and hard work with the Neighborhood Association on this. Really, there were multiple conversations over a period of a few months, and they were extremely patient as the neighborhood kind of worked through questions and concerns. One point I really want to emphasize is something that, that Rich pointed out. This redevelopment here is incredibly, incredible improvement over what was there previously. From a Neighborhood Association standpoint, we want to help where we can to make sure that things remain successful there. Rich mentioned that, that big picture, we do have some concerns about the volume of signage in the general area. That's true. At the same time, we try not to take overly rigid or absolutist point of view on signage. And, and we try to work with folks where we can. In this situation, it was mentioned that the initial proposal was to add a button atop each of the pole signs. There, there just wasn't support there from the Neighborhood Board's perspective to do that. So that was the point at which we started working with Rich and his team on, on compromises. And, and the proposal that's before you, it reflects that for the, the four-foot addition to the, to the corner round-style monument. We think it's reasonable. We don't think it's over the top or excessive, so we're certainly supportive. If there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
Anything for Jason?
Have you had some similar discussions with other businesses out there, other than Eichners?
Yeah. As, in recent months, really over the past year, some of the, the sign issues have cropped up as, as questions and concerns have been raised with the Neighborhood Association. We've done our best to field those questions and communicate accordingly.
Well, I know you guys have been very diligent with, and I think there's been some tremendous improvements. I was just curious if you've had this same discussion, or similar discussion with other businesses, and you've kind of, it sounds like you try and meet in the middle.
If you can. I mean, if, not to, not to rehash too much, but there have been times that I can remember since I've been on the board that we have opposed variance requests for additional signage. We've, we've supported others. I mean, like I said, we, we try not to be all over the place, but at the same time, we also try not to be so rigid and, I guess, just philosophical on, on certain things that, that we're not willing to, to find compromise. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks very much.
You bet. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay.
In terms of the...
Eric?
The area really is the way we had to look at it for the calculation. Now, if you want to limit it to this elevation as stated, or to the extension being only of a certain area, which is dimensioned on this drawing, I think you could make that an additional condition. We didn't have any conditions recommended, of course, so we, you know, throw that out there. But we wanted to make sure we were looking at this as not a separate sign of its own, but as an, you know, increase of the sign that was already there.
Right.
By doing that, we have to calculate the height and the, a rectangular area of the face of the overall signage.
So basically, it's an increase of about 16 square feet over what they've got?
Be, as it's proposed. Now, if you're concerned about them tacking on little pieces, you could limit it to this elevation or to...
To say, no more than 16 square feet.
No more than 16 square feet of actual cabinet area or something like that facing...
Okay. How does that calculate within the ordinance then, Eric, for...
Well, you're actually describing it in the relief, so it's prescript, you know, it's prescribed in that relief. But the way that ordinance, ordinance would normally calculate it is the dimension areas of basically a rectangular area that circumscribes the, the area used for signage, including the backgrounds or the lit portions of the background.
Right. And Eric, since this isn't just a, you know, a double-faced sign, this is a four-sided cube, right? Okay.
And it's described that way in the relief.
Okay, okay.
So we're not, we're not, and it's realistic for us to look at it as a four-by-four sign, not as an extension of the base?
It's realistic for you to look at it, the real impacts of what's being proposed.
Okay.
And if you want to limit it, you want to, you know, you want to give us enough information that we can limit it to what it is, you know?
Right.
If you want to say is for the sign elevation in Exhibit L...
Right.
You can do that.
Okay.
What about an exchange for the band on the sign? If they have the sign above as they have it proposed here?
I think as they're proposing it, they would still keep their tenant location earning within the signs.
And my personal opinion is that's just clutter. And I think the mark truly is the mark.
More, more, more.
It is going to help.
And right now, just so you know, there's five tenant bays here.
And the other should stay. I'm not suggesting that, but I think it's duplicative.
So they've allocated those spaces based on the way our directory sign allocations are written. So, you know, they would just one of these blanks. So if you wanted them to not identify the tenant that uses this upper portion, then you would want to make that a limitation, too.
Jake, I, I'm picking up what you're laying down here, use a Bill Gray comment, but if we look at the other sign he's already got, Burger King's on that one twice, if I remember right already.
Right. And I don't, I don't think it does any good. I actually think this actually gives them a chance to be more visible. The other seems like clutter, so...
Right. But what you're saying, if we'd go with this above, then we'd take it off the band below.
Right.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's get to that in just a moment here. Okay. Okay. We got, we're, we're done with questions for staff. We will close public portion, then go to board deliberation. So we kind of had some thoughts going here, it sounds like.
What will happen here?
Since no one was in opposition, well, all right, Rich, I'll, I'll play by the rules since Eric stood up here and said something. We'll open it back up. All right. Since staff commented, Rich, yes, you, you can have some comments here. Three minutes.
Thank you.
You bet.
I appreciate your concern, but I would request that you not do that. We're trying to get them some more visibility. I, I have not discussed with the, the tenant that issue. I'd be happy to discuss with them some kind of an issue. What has happened on, do you have the monument sign picture?
Is there a better one here, sir?
Maybe you have better ones, yeah. It wasn't cloudy on the day you...
Yeah. It's over here somewhere. Yeah, somewhere. There's your monument. Where's the original one with the button on the top? Here it is.
What happened here is on the, in, in the, in early version, it was an attempt to use existing signage allowance. And we have one bay which has not been rented, 3803. And so what Burger King did was they came to us and said, can we, you know, rent that space and use it? And then our thought was, well, just take the Eichner properties off at such time as we rent the bay.
Sure.
If you're going to do a restriction, I guess I would suggest that you maybe give them an option on this sign where they could leave either their drive-thru with their arrow sign or their horizontal sign. Their biggest concern is they have a button, they have a square, round logo, and they're given horizontal advertising. So their essential logo becomes very, very small. If you could imagine a McDonald's, you know, golden arches where the Burger King is on either the top or the bottom there, it's just not very big, just not very noticeable. So we've tried to work with them under existing means and, and criteria, and that's not worked. And, and the second sign went up maybe two years ago as an effort to, to ameliorate the situation. And so I would rather have you do, rather remove them from the, the corner sign. If you were going to have a restriction, which I would wish you, when I request that you not do respectfully, would be to say you get one face on each of the monument signs rather than the two faces, and then they can determine whether they want the Burger King or the drive-thru arrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hang on one second, Rich, if you would.
Sure.
My, maybe I'm confused, but you have the corner sign, and then you have monument signs at each entrance, correct?
Yes.
These are the pole signs.
The pole sign, not, not monument, I'm sorry. There are two pole signs and the corner monument sign.
But this is the proposal that you're not doing, correct?
The, the button on top we're not doing. But if you notice, if you notice on the...
My intent was to not touch these. Only where you were putting the button seems like clutter to me.
Right. But at the same time, you're taking their name, their horizontal name off from that, that corner. So if, what I guess what I'm suggesting is, if you felt you needed to extract something...
Yes.
My suggestion, having not talked to the, the tenant...
Right.
My suggestion would be that you take one of these off where they have two horizontal signs.
Right.
Not proposing that you add the button on the top.
Yeah, just cover that up.
I'm clear, I'm clear now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Rich.
You'd be, you'd be willing to talk to Burger King about it?
I, I would talk to them, yes. And, and if, you know, if they were, they're, they're based in Dallas, Texas. And if they were here, I'd be happy to have you ask them directly, but...
If it's something we wanted, that's just the way it would have to be. It wouldn't be any further discussion.
Sure. And if I, and if you pass it that way, and I talk to them and say, no, we want to come argue to keep all the locations, then obviously they could come back and, and do that.
And have to file a new case, and, yeah.
Whatever the proper procedure would be, yes.
All right. Thank you, Rich. Okay. Back to board deliberation, so, but I appreciate the protocol catch there. So what do you folks think?
You know, I, just to kind of start it off for sake of discussion, I, this is a very, very difficult location. So, I mean, I can empathize with their need for some, some kind of extra signage. But on the other hand, they have very low seating capacity, and I did notice that the drive-thru was busy. And I was there probably mid-afternoon, closer to around 4:00. And so, you know, I, I guess that, I, I always like to, when possible, default to, you know, the wishes of the Neighborhood Association. They do seem to have the support of the Neighborhood Association. And so I can see, you know, some requirement maybe on, on their behalf for some extra, extra signage. It's a tiny place. You know, I, I don't know if even a computer-generated scrolling sideshow is going to help.
Right.
But I guess that, you know, like I said, I do like to default to the wishes of the neighborhood. And if, I think these proposals for the additional signage, and I really appreciate Jake's comments, I, I think there was kind of a tendency towards some clutter there. I think if we can kind of, you know, narrow that down, that, you know, it may be in the best interest of the business and the neighborhood, since that's what they want, to, to support this.
Good comments. Thank you. There's some of you who were on the board when this first came to us for the variance for the other monument sign and some that weren't. I was concerned at that time about the amount of signage being requested for a five-bay strip mall. It's a great project. It has improved that corridor. That's great. But we've got two monument signs and a pole sign, and now we're asking to put a topper on one of the monument signs. At best, I would be cautiously, cautious on my approval here. If somebody wanted to look at some further restrictions, quid pro quo, if you want this, we take this away, I'd certainly be supportive. I'm very close to on the fence with this one. I think the issue is not the property and its inherent layout, it's the choice that either the owner, owner, owner or the tenants or the franchisees have made. You know, if this was a tax account office, if this was a fine jewelry store, I doubt whether we'd have the same questions or issues with exposure. I think you can see it's a Burger King. It's just a small store, and you've got to be smart about getting in there, so a lot of people may go somewhere else. So I don't know if we'll solve all the problems here, but, and it's just the issue before us today, but we have a lot of signage here now. So if we're going to approve something, if the neighborhood likes the four by four, that's, I would certainly support the neighborhood's angle on that, but if somebody wants to look at, maybe take the other double one down on the pole sign, I'd support that too.
I'd default to the neighborhood's opinion.
Okay.
It was merely a comment. I clearly, my personal belief is sometimes less is more, but the neighborhood supports it, so.
Right.
I don't, this doesn't have to be quid pro quo.
Okay.
I can support staff recommendation.
And that's a very good point, then.
I'd move it.
I think the neighborhood got their meat-in-the-middle consensus because they reduced the size of it, and I think that that made them happy.
So with that, I raised the question, but I would move staff recommendation.
Okay.
Staff recommendation is denial.
Reading the wrong one.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make that.
Not doing that, thank you. I'm not trying to end it.
No.
I would actually, let me rephrase my motion.
It's an easy mistake.
Yeah, I might need glasses. I think I actually do. My motion would be that we approve the dimension of the actual sign proposed with the neighborhood's acknowledgement of that. Can that be done?
Could someone please clarify? There are four sign faces. Is it four by four by four by four, or is it just four by four at 16 square feet?
It's a cube. It's got me, there's four.
And it's not volume, it's area, so.
Yeah, there's four sign faces.
Yeah.
So there's two sets of parallel sign faces. So we're calculating that, we're calculating it as the same we did for the original.
Can we have you do the math where we would approve the variance and exception requested so long as?
I'm moving what has been submitted and what the neighborhood has approved.
Right.
You can word that however you want.
So long as it's in compliance with what was presented in Exhibit L.
The relief is for up to a certain height on a monument with four sign faces, so the variance of the parallel is there.
Okay.
If you want to assure that they're not filling out that additional area to the sides, I think you would just reference that no more than the extension, the four by four cubic extension above the monument.
As noted in Exhibit L.
Well, and was the question, is it actually, how many square feet of sign do we have? And is, 16 times four, 64?
If you're going down from the 94.5 to different.
I mean, I think that, was that your question?
Well, someone had, it had been mentioned that it was 16 square foot, square footage in area previously. I don't think that's accurate. So if we're going to say a square footage as a condition of the variance, we should have what that, what that is with the four sign faces. If you want to refer to the Exhibit L with the four sign faces, that's also fine.
Yeah.
Right, so the way it's calculated now, there's area within here that falls within the.
Well, quit doing that.
I think that's where we're getting at.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
Right, so I'm trying to think of how you state it so that it only would include this.
I always say.
And not take away, you know, something down here, so.
Can we approve a variance to the existing construction, constructed sign to facilitate installation of a sign extension in compliance with what was submitted in Exhibit L?
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, you should.
And let you do the math.
And it would still include the calculations, but it would have that condition so that it wouldn't go beyond that, as it's proposed, basically.
Yeah, I.
And we can work on it if you want to.
I guess it's always been my preference that our.
Glenn, a look at the order and see if that.
Okay, I just want to clarify something. For simple math, like setbacks, I get it, but to have us sit up here and figure out square footage and be quoting that constitutionally back to you, I think that's your job to take our intent and reflect it.
Yeah, I think we understand your intent.
Especially when I, I can't even read, evidently.
That's a four, and that's a four.
Right, so I'm not being critical, but if our intent is clear here, and you take it forward.
I think I understand your intent, and we can prepare an order that follows.
Then you can turn it into order that Rich agrees with and understands, and we're okay. So, do we need to try again here with a motion, then?
I think his motion was to allow it as presented in accordance.
Exhibit, yeah.
Okay.
And to Glenn's point of it can just be clear as to what that is.
Right, right, but I appreciate our diligent attorney's comments, too. Keeps us on task. All right, is there a second on that?
I second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. Okay, motion carried. I'm going to go to Burger King next week. Okay, all right. That brings up item number 14. An exception request at 2115 Evergreen Avenue.
Item number 14 is an appeal to allow construction of a 30-foot by 48-foot detached garage, so it would have a total of 1,440 square feet. Subject property is on the south side of Evergreen in a low-density residential area. There is a church adjacent to the west and an apartment complex to the north. It's a .7 acre site, so it is a fairly large parcel with a, that would have a new garage in the rear yard. This existing garage would be removed. Here's the layout. You can see that they're going to demo the existing garage and then construct a new 30 by 48 garage. Here's the site photo. You can see from Evergreen, it's, there's enough vegetation that the rear yard's really not highly visible from the street.
It's why they call it that street, right?
Right, sure. And here's the elevation of what they would be constructing. Again, it would have a 30-foot width by 48 deep, and I forget the height offhand, but I do know we verified it would be less than 17 feet. We had one car come back in support. Our recommendation is approval, however, we feel that since this is a single-family residential neighborhood, we would rather see horizontal overlap siding and asphalt shingles in place of the metal that's shown here. So our recommendation is approval, subject to condition one, it'd be constructive in compliance with the building code with all necessary permits. Two, any detached garage should be constructed with building materials that are compatible with the primary dwelling, including horizontal lap siding and asphalt shingles. Three, no portion of the home, of the accessory structure shall be used as a dwelling unit. And four, it should not be used as a home occupation unless the board grants a special permit or such. Any questions?
Bert, what is the home construction material? Is it brick?
That's a good question. It appears to be horizontal lap siding.
Okay, and I can double-check with the applicant there, too. I just couldn't quite tell from that if it was tan brick or if it was.
It's brick. Is it brick?
It is brick, okay. So if we were looking to make it commensurate with the other structure, would it be more of an issue for you just to have the horizontal siding?
Right.
Maybe they could do vinyl, or they could do wider vinyl panels, or?
Yeah, just so it has more of a residential.
Okay.
Character than an industrial or commercial appearance.
That picture kind of looks like a Morton building to me.
Right. Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions for Bert? I didn't cut you short on your presentation, did I? Okay, all right. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant or representative of the applicant. Thank you for your patience this afternoon.
I'm Bill Childs, I live at 2115 Evergreen. And as he was saying, my proposal is, is I'd like to build a new garage. We have seven vehicles between our family. We have a couple of four-wheelers. We have a large yard, so we have a lot of lawn equipment. We have no storage. We have a two-car garage on site, which is in excellent condition. Our original proposal was, when I went down to talk to, about building a new one, was to keep the existing garage that we have. I mean, it's constructed of wood, and the foundation is four, it goes up four feet block all around it. We just put a new roof on it less than two years ago, which was about, cost about $5,000 because it's a hip roof. But our home is all brick, and so we would like to put our cars and stuff in the garage for storage. Right now, we rent storage we have for about the last seven years, because we keep two cars on site that are in the garage all year round. And so what I had proposed to do was to build a new garage, and originally, I was hoping to build something in around 2,000 square feet. And then they informed me and told me that, well, that's probably a little bit too big. And so in addition to this here, I was, I was wanting to amend the destruction of my, I really did not want to remove my other garage. My neighbors that I've talked to, I've lived there for 13 years, I'm great neighbors, the church on the side, I mean, I've never had anything stolen or anything like that there, but my vehicles are all within, you know, I just got two new ones, but everything is pretty new and in really good condition, and it just sits out in the sun, and everything is licensed and insured, and so what I would like to do is to, also, I was looking at wanting to build the building in steel. And the reason is, is if you look at a lot of the places now, everybody's going with steel roofs. In the city of Des Moines, I mean, I've seen them all over. It's a nice, the nice thing about the steel, you don't have to paint it, I mean, it's like steel siding on your home. The building that I was going to construct would also have an overhang of a foot along the, along the soffits and stuff, and it would be steel roof, steel, and it would also be insulated. It would be, had put insulated doors on the front of it, I mean, anything that would meet, it would look like any other steel building in town if you went up to a business. I mean, I want it to look really good because my property looks really nice. I was, if I was able to keep my other garage, I was going to put the same type of siding in a color format that would match my house. And the colors that we were going to go with were just kind of like off beige and stuff, and so we were going to go two-tone to match up to our house and stuff, kind of a sandstone and beige. So if I was able to do that, then I was going to put the driveway along the side of the property, along the side of my garage, because this one here would go right directly behind, about 30 feet behind it, and then on the, on the east side of our property, on the east side of our existing garage, the driveway would go right up into it, which we have our property in our backyard, they're saying 250 feet by 85. So, and I'm still going to have a huge yard, I mean, that was, we went out and tried to look at other homes, buy other property outside the city of Des Moines, in the city of Des Moines, and we can't, of course, we'd love our home, but we can't find what we want comparable to replace what we have. So that's why we had decided that we could see if we could, would be able to build a new garage and stuff, and meet all the city requirements. I mean, there's going to be anybody living in it, it's just going to be, my garage is just completely full. I've got some pictures of, of just how congested, and my neighbors, I mean, and nobody complains.
You're fine, yeah, just kind of lay it in the center, just lay it right on top of that.
Well, that one there is my, that's the back of my yard there. Get some of that. That's my side yard going back.
Yep.
Okay. Now this here, you can kind of see the shed there, that's basically where this tree is right here, that would be removed, and there's some rhubarb back here. That's about from where, where the front of the garage would start, and about where the rhubarb is, where it would about end.
Okay.
Now this here is my, my existing garage here, and the drive that I would bring, I'll show you another picture, but the drive I would bring is along this east side where this evergreen, as we would remove that, that's all landscaped. I have a trailer behind the garage because I have no storage for it, but we would bring in the driveway here, probably out 15 feet or so, I imagine, or a little wider, and then it would come around and then up into the garage.
You're a Chevy guy.
Oh, yeah. I'm a Chevy man, but it, so that's four of our cars out right there. There's two in the garage.
Yep.
That's the side of my garage. It has an insulated door in the front, insulated side door. You can see the block. It has Masonite siding on it now, I replaced some of it, but I wanted to completely take all the Masonite off and put steel on it. That's what the inside of the garage is.
There's the fun stuff, huh?
Yeah, my fun stuff, plus the garage is all insulated.
Mm-hmm.
There's a Ford in my collection.
It's a good one, okay.
And this is here's about, oh, my driveway, it goes from the street up here is about 130 feet. So that's, that's from the part there.
So as part of this proposal, and I just want to make sure that we're following, you'd keep the existing garage you have?
I would like to.
And then you'd have a little lane that goes around on the right?
Yes.
And you'd have enough room with your side yard and everything to be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay. You've checked with staff on that part?
I, I had talked to Brian.
Okay.
And I showed Brian everything down there, and he said, you know what, I got the same problem you got. I got, I had got too many things and not enough room to put it.
Right.
I said, we rewrote the house and everything, and so the shed would be removed, the shed's on, on top of a deck and stuff, so it would be removed completely.
Okay.
And I mean, I guess I don't know what, I would meet whatever we need to do to do it and do it right, that's the, and I've, I've got quotes from two different companies that, professionals that build them, and so it would be, I wouldn't be constructing it myself, it would be professionally done.
Sure, oh, yeah. Well, Bill, I think the crux of the staff's presentation was that they aren't in opposition to you wanting to have this garage of this size and granting that, or, you know, their recommendation is for us to grant the exception, but their concern was, again, this is residential. You'd mentioned, you know, it'll look as good as any business, well, we don't want to look like a business, we want to look at it as a nice residential neighborhood. And your house and some that we're building that certain timeframe on East Evergreen were the real anchors of that neighborhood. You all have the longer, deeper lots, primarily ranch-style houses. I'd love to keep that value to your property and help you enhance it. But in looking at that, staff wants to look at keeping this residential in character. So most of the time, when you get quotes on these things, yep, they're going to do the vertical ribbed steel. Can you look at getting horizontal?
I can, and we can do, they told me I could do.
And what does that do to your project for?
Well, it doesn't. It doesn't change anything as far as the, as far as adding any, any additional cost to it.
Okay.
Now, the asphalt shingles and stuff would just completely.
Okay.
I mean, I probably wouldn't spend, I know what, how much money I spent to do my house.
Right.
And, and, yeah, I, the asphalt shingles and stuff would just.
Right, and your drawing doesn't show it, but a lot of times with the roofing, it's, it's the ribbed, you know, crossover riveted panels.
It would be exactly that, yes.
Is there a way with color or style, or sometimes they have a coating, like now they have the steel roofs that actually have an architectural shingle look to them, and they're sprayed basically like with the Lionex bed liner stuff?
Yes.
Have you seen those?
I have seen those. I haven't checked on it, but yes, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay. So we might have some more questions for you here, but, you know, I know this was your time for presentation, but I, that's kind of a point that I was hoping that you would address on how you approach the design of it.
Yeah, no, and I had no, I have no problem with the vertical, it was mentioned, it was mentioned to me.
Okay.
Or the, or the horizontal, it was mentioned to me, and I, I said, you know, it wouldn't be my, it's not what I would prefer, just because I just don't, I don't like the way it lays out.
Yeah.
We use it, I, we use it at work.
Have you seen where people will do a two-tone, then they'll still do a vertical, but they'll do the bottom four foot, almost like a wainscoting, it'll be a different shade.
Yeah, that's exactly what it would be, yeah.
And then there'd be a band, or however they do it, transitions.
And we were doing the, this is designed for the wainscoting.
Okay.
So, and that was going to come up four feet along, all the way around it.
Okay.
And that would be the, that would be the two-tone color. So I would probably do the darker, which is a sandstone, as our house is all trimmed in sandstone, and so it would go up four feet, go up four feet here, all the way around the garage.
Yep, and I trust you're avoiding any windows in here unless necessary.
There will be no windows. What you see is there's two insulated front doors.
Yep.
And a side entry door.
Okay.
The garage that I have now has four windows in it, and I have put a, oh, real heavy, like plexiglass.
Yeah.
On the outside and on the inside.
Okay.
Just to keep from anybody, and I've never, ever had anything broken into, so, no, windows are probably the worst thing that.
Okay.
Because I do have a lot of tools and stuff, and, but there would be no commercial, I mean, if, you know, if we needed to talk to my neighbors again, there, I do no commercial work out of my, my garage at all and stuff, so. My wife complains all the time because she never has a place to park her winter car because she has to go outside and start it, so.
Which I think that's one of the staff's conditions, that, you know, no home-based business-related stuff, just personally. business-related stuff, just personally.
And that's, he told me that's about one of the hardest things, I'm trying to get one of these done.
Okay, all right, um.
My question is the exception is for only four-hundred-and-forty square feet over the maximum allowed. And if you're building a fourteen-hundred square foot building, that garage has to come down. Your second, your garage, why wouldn't you just keep your garage and then build a smaller? Maybe we needed some of us.
I was going to address that, like Linda's saying.
Yeah.
We only noticed this is an exception of four-hundred-and-forty square feet over one thousand, so, uh, your options would either be to reduce the existing garage by, down by seven-hundred, five-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet, which is the area of your existing garage. So that would allow you to build an eight-hundred-and-sixty-four square foot building. Or you could continue with a month and we could re-notice it as a variance to allow you to have a fourteen-hundred-and-forty square foot plus a five-hundred-and-seventy-six square foot. So you'd actually need a variance over of.
So I'd have to go to another board to get a variance?
You, you just have to, we, we just hold this off and get it squared out so that the request is, is what you want to do for us to review. So you'd just come back next month and, and you'd be at the front of the agenda this time.
Mentioned the application fee for an exception is two-hundred-and-twenty-five. For a variance, it's three-hundred.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Pay another seventy-five dollars plus a little more for a notice fee.
Or as, as of today, you know, if we wanted to approve this, we'd just be cutting down the size of that.
Right.
Proposed building to fit the maximum amount of the variance that's in here.
Well, I mean, if I could, if at all possible, to be able to keep my other one, I mean, of course, I'm on board with that. I mean, we're talking a twenty-thousand-dollar garage, that'd be destroying.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's my only reason for keeping it is, I mean, it's in such great shape and, and it would cost twenty, I checked, it would cost twenty thousand dollars to replace it.
Right.
So it just doesn't, you know.
Well, and I, I, I think the way this was constructed, there was an assumption you wouldn't have the old garage anymore, you just have the big building.
Well, and that, and that's what we, and that's what we did. He told me when we, we did the papers and stuff, he said, you got to write demo on this. I was under full understanding of that. I, I knew that. I knew that we, I was coming in and stuff to get approval for the new building.
Okay.
But as a, as a thought that while I was in here, if there was any way I could also keep the existing structure, I was, you know, that's why I'm asking.
Right. And, and that, and I'm not faulting you for how you were thinking on this, but that would have had to have been clear because the staff figures all these ratios out ahead of time on what's going to be there when you're done with what you're requesting for the whole property.
Yes, there really are two options would be the one, get approval today, which they can only grant you the ability to build a eight-hundred-and-sixty-four square foot garage.
Right.
Or you could continue it to August twenty-seventh.
And come back and ask to keep the existing garage and build as one as big as you wanted. What I might suggest, if you come back, maybe fine-tune that drawing a little bit or bring a color version.
Okay.
That's a lot of garages to have inside, you know? I think a variance would be much more difficult than an exception would be.
Yeah. Well, I, I look at it just from the perspective that, you know, I'm a taxpayer, I pay my taxes, I got a nice piece of property, and I, and I can't, and I mean, I'm not trying to build from side to side, quarter into corner, but I think that within reason and stuff, I mean, within my neighborhood, there is buildings, the size that I'm wanting to build on smaller properties that may have got built ten years ago, but I, I just don't think that there's any reason that, that, I mean, I'm not using all my property, I'm not.
Sure, sure. And, and we, we can take all that into account. I think the, the fundamental thing is here, what you're fully asking to have when you're done with this is not what's reflected in the request in front of us. So we want to make sure we've at least got that correct.
Because we only notified all of your neighbors.
Right.
You would have fourteen-hundreds.
Right.
Square feet of accessory structures. Now you're wanting a little over two thousand, so we just have to re-notice and let your neighbors know that you're wanting something different than what they were originally notified. It's a pretty big lot.
Okay, so if I decide to go for the continuance.
Yeah.
If I change my mind within a couple of days, can I come back and get this, or I mean, can this get?
We would not be approving anything then, then today to give you the option to choose, no.
Okay.
You'd just be coming back next month. But I think our discussion would maybe go back to some similar things on how it's going to fit in. He's checking. Right, there's, there's really no, uh, there's nothing punitive here if, if you want to come back next month. I think the clearer picture is always the best one. Because otherwise, we're going to be approving, if we would, something you don't really want, and that doesn't get you anywhere.
Well, no, and that, and that's exactly, but I mean.
Yeah.
I guess I'm asking from the standpoint, I mean, is because I'm asking for so much, is I mean, is, is there a chance that I'm not going to just?
Well, that's, that's a little tough to predict all the way around, but I think the tenor of our discussion, I don't know that we're as concerned as much about the size of the building as how it might just kind of be designed to fit in a little bit. And we can certainly go back and forth and discuss that. Yes, you aren't going to be pushing your boundaries with your neighbors and having it two feet from the lot line and storm waters running over, and we've run into those things. It, it would just be, right, right now, it looks like a very large golf cart storage building or a, a, a contractor's storage building, you know? And I know it will be an enhancement no matter what, but trying to make that fit in a little bit with a little finesse. You know, your, your drawing doesn't even show the colors it would be.
Right.
Or your proposed, um.
The wainscoting.
Wainscoting, the four foot. If you brought that back, that's maybe going to help a little bit on smoothing it into the neighborhood.
That brings some examples of they exist on, in your neighborhood of, you've mentioned that there were other places where it's similar.
Right, right, yeah.
Context in the neighborhood is important.
Yeah, and if you're contracting with somebody to come up with design ideas, they ought to be able to show it in color, ten dimensions, who knows what? I, I mean, they, they've got to have the capabilities to give you some, some elevations all the way around, you know? Show this side, show that side, how it's going to look. But again, coming back from staff's approach, they really want to see this to try to be commensurate with what the house would be, and I know we can't do it in brick, certainly not going to suggest that.
Yeah, no.
But if you would want to look at vertical, you know, breaking it up with color and stuff helps, the, the roof, you might want to see what options there are or how that will look with some real examples of what that steel roof looks like. You know, whoever you're working with, they've got to have some examples of something they built in Indianola or Des Moines or, or somewhere else to share.
Yeah, it'd be the first one I'd seen in the, in the, in the, I mean, we have it at work on our.
Right.
Our roofing, which was quite expensive.
But I'm guessing you're in an M-one neighborhood or something, or a, a commercial or industrial neighborhood, so, you know? But, but if you've got some pictures to share and stuff, if that's the direction we're going here, what it sounds like it might be. So, but at this stage of the game, Bill, um, just, just procedurally, before we get to any decisions, anything else you want to add short-term?
No.
Because I do need to see if there's anybody else here that wants to speak in support of you. I know there's probably one that already supports it, or if there's anybody who wants to speak in opposition, so. So, um, hang tight for just a second, all right? All right, is there anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Any further questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, closed board, uh, closed, closed public comment, go to board deliberation. What do you guys want to do? You want to give them a chance to get this squared out and come back next month?
I would move for a continuance.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for continuance. And then staff can sit down and talk with you in a little more detail here, I think, and help you out. Okay, we got a motion for continuance till next month, uh, and we'll have an amended exception at that time, correct?
Unless it needs to be a variance.
Yeah, or, yeah, and, uh, we'll have an amended exception or possibly an amended variance at that time. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Okay, so, so hang in there, we'll see where we get. Okay, four o'clock, anybody need a break, or shall we soldier on? Okay, all right. All right, item fifteen was on consent, so we moved to item sixteen. That's a conditional use permit request at three-oh-three Southeast Thirty-first Street.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, I'll give Sharie the one card.
This is a situation where the, the, under the way the ordinance was changed for treating businesses that either were gas stations or limited food, the previous use of this would have, was actually segregated away from the gas sales.
Right.
And, um, would have changed the, had it wanted to operate independently, it would have required, uh, limited food sales, uh, and it would have had to stay below forty percent. And what's been done is they are now wanting to convert this to be the one premises with gas sales, so they're a gas station, opposing a gas station with the sale of alcoholic liquor in a C-two. They are, because they're changing the use, they are subject to the separation, but they aren't facing any, uh, requirements to, uh, get relief from any of the separation requirements. It's been a gas station combined with the retail use of it, um, adjoining it for several years now. You can see they've made, at least maintained over time, the appearance of it, it's, it's got a very clean-looking appearance. The site doesn't conform to today's site regulations, but they're not expanding the building or extending the business in any fashion, so they're not driving any site plan requirements in the future. If they were doing that, they would be facing things like converting this to a monument sign, um, providing additional landscaping and buffering around the premises. So I did, I did want to point that out, that, um, over time, if this did expand, there, there would be some other provisions that would come into play. It is in a, again, in a neighborhood context, similar to the El Palomino, although this is gas sales as well. It kind of serves as a, one of the few, um, locations for that serving a residential neighborhood. As you get south of the railroad from the fairground area, um, there's quite a, once you get south of the viaduct, it's really kind of a, there's a major barrier here with the railroad just to the north, and so it's not, it's not really the same neighborhood that, and the people that live in this neighborhood, um, have limited opportunity for retail use, uh, access. So it's one of the few that's there, it's operating cleanly, um, they do sell liquor, uh, it's, the, the business itself is limited in its size, so from, from that standpoint, an operationally, staff hasn't seen any concerns. There was two police calls, I think, if you look, neither one of them were related to this property. One was vandalism, one was motor vehicle theft, and I don't believe either one was with this premise, so. It's not generating problems or exhibiting any kind of pattern of nuisance based on the way it's been operating already. So from that perspective, staff really doesn't have a lot of concerns until the point it looks maybe to expand or extend the site in some fashion. And then we're, we would then look to impose our convenience store design guidelines to get some site upgrades, but at, at this time, uh, staff would recommend giving the standard conditions, keeping alcohol sales to below forty percent of the total gross revenues for the gas station, convenience store. All the things that we're asking for, post, posting no loitering, managers' information, the things that we're wanting to see with these businesses. So from that standpoint, we're recommending approval, subject to those ten conditions. If there's not any questions, or if there's any questions, feel free to ask them.
Anyone? Okay, thank you, Eric.
And ironically, I thought it was interesting that the adjoining neighbor was the one that sent in the card in favor because I don't see that very often.
Right, right, very true. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant?
Representative of the applicant, Lloyd Ogul, Ogul Law Office, three-oh-one East Walnut, Suite Two, Des Moines. Just very quickly, um, I did want to submit, um, our client's alcohol policy and just also some screenshots of their surveillance system they have on the site. They do require anyone who wants to purchase, swipe their cards and use that verify ID system. There really isn't any history, uh, on this property of any problems. It's really operating as the same exact business as it has since two thousand and one. Begin with the change in the law, they wanted to change the classification from limited food retail sales establishment to a gas station slash convenience store. They are well-known in the community and they are the sponsors of the East Des Moines Girls softball team. With that, I have, I'm going to take any questions.
Sure. Any questions for Lloyd? How long's your client operated there?
Uh, I believe it's had since two thousand and nine.
Nine, so about five years now. And I don't know if you know this or not, but generally speaking, what hours do they operate?
Uh, I, I don't know that answer.
That's okay. It's not a twenty-four-hour store.
Doesn't the signs say twenty-four?
I mean, they would, the C-two would allow them to be twenty-four.
Right, right. But, but in general, to your knowledge, you're not a twenty-four-hour store.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, all right, all right, well, thank you. We'll check back with you here momentarily. Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, any, uh, further questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. Close the public portion, go to board deliberation. I used to live on the west side of Pleasant Hill, didn't I, Linda?
You did.
And oftentimes, uh, my wife and I would stop here because it was on our way, for gasoline, for quick groceries, stuff like that, so there's kind of a need for that down in this area. I don't see a problem with it. I'll put the motion out there to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the, uh, conditions one through ten that staff has presented. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
All right, Linda seconds. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, have them keep up the good work, improve in the neighborhood. Okay, that's what you get when you sit and wait for three hours, right? Okay. And man, that brings us to these guys. All right, item number seventeen is a variance request at twenty-four-twenty-eight Hubble Avenue for Quick Trip Corporation, Q-U-I-K, Quick Trip.
And, uh, members of the board, I did put a revised staff recommendation in front of each of your chair.
Appreciate that.
After the staff recommendation went out last Friday, the applicant was kind enough to point out that they actually don't need the conditional use permit, just the, um, variance to the separation distance requirement. As a gas station or a convenience store, they are allowed to sell beer and wine in a, um, C-one district so long as they maintain the, um, one-hundred-and-fifty feet of separation from any church, park, school, or daycare, so. In this instance, they don't meet that separation distance, so they need the variance. The subject property is the Quick Trip on, at the corner of kind of between East, or Hubble and Easton Boulevard. They're looking to redevelop the site. They would be demolishing two existing buildings and assembling the parcels to form one new parcel, uh, and would be developing a new gas station, convenience store on the site. They're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place. The existing building, uh, is grandfathered in or not subject to the separation distance requirements, um, since they've been in existence. But if they demolish the existing building, uh, and seek to sell beer and wine within a new structure, then the new, um, separation distances do kick in. So that's where they're getting hung up. There is a church on the north side of Easton Boulevard that's within sixty-five feet of the site. Incidentally, there is a letter of support from that church, uh, in front of you, as well as letters of support from the Accent Neighborhood, which is to the east, and then the Fairmont Neighborhood, which is to the north, the Fairmont Park Neighborhood to the north. Here's the layout of how the proposed new gas station, convenience store, uh, would be, sort of pretty north to the top. There would be a, a new structure, generally here with the gas pumps along Hubble. Again, Easton would be to the, generally northwest, Hubble would be along the southeast, and then the East Twenty-Fourth Street, uh, would be right along the southwest side of the site. Here's the elevations of how the new store would look. It'd be one of their Quick Trips, new models that we're seeing popping up in other places around the city. And here's just some site photos, uh, this site, photos, um, from Easton, looking south at the building. You can see the gas pumps are currently along Hubble. And here's one of the buildings that would be removed. It's the former building along Easton. And then this is looking north from the site towards the church. This is a church that's within sixty-five feet.
And that's on Easton there, right?
That is on the north side of Easton.
What's the address of that church? Because there was a comment from, one of the folks in opposition lived at 2424 Easton and said it was noisy, and if it moved further east, it'd bother her even more, is that the little white house?
Believe, yeah, the church is 2412, so 2424 would be...
That, that makes sense, then that's where that card came from, okay. Which?
Here's the consent map, so, yeah, that...
There's, oh, okay, so that's where the card came from, gotcha. So in reality, it doesn't really move it east any closer toward that location, I don't believe.
Right.
Okay, all right?
Yeah, the building would actually be shifted west a little bit.
Okay, right.
It would be slightly further from that property owner.
Okay.
And the police reports are all in front of you as well. You can see there really isn't anything significant in those from the past twelve months. So, so I agree with you to the staff recommendation, it's a tough one. We do appreciate Quick Trip and the wanting to make the investment in this neighborhood. We know they've run a good operation here. We just had the challenge applying the, I guess, the literal interpretation of the code in order to grant the variance, they need to demonstrate the hardship. And so we weren't able to, I guess, reach that conclusion. So we have recommended denial, have raised the C in the staff report. We do have some conditions laid out that if the board finds they have adequately demonstrated hardship exists, then we would recommend any approval be subject to those conditions there.
Okay.
Any questions?
Don't think we have an eighth in the moment? We will find out later if we do. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant? I like having a multimedia presentation for our last hearing.
Try to keep it short.
No, it's...
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of adjustment, my name is Larry James. Office is 801 Grand Avenue, Des Moines. I'm here representing Quick Trip Corporation. With me is Mike Talcott of Quick Trip, he is off south of Kansas City. Thank you for allowing us to have a brief presentation today. Again, I will try to keep it brief, not repeat too much. As Bert indicated, Quick Trip seeks to rebuild this location at 2420 at Hubble, very similar model to what they're, that they did at Sixteenth University, Twenty-Second Street in West Des Moines, and what they're currently starting construction on at East Thirty-Fifth University. Essentially, they're expanding their food and beverage options. As you can see in the photo, you know, the, the new stores have a very high-quality materials, brick and tile on all four sides, they're completely ADA compliant, there's four entrances to the store. Heavily landscaped, this store would be approximately twenty-five percent green space, cedar requirements are twenty percent, so this exceeds that, there'd be additional landscape buffer to the neighbors. The plan would be to build the new store first, then tear down the old store immediately upon completion. And as Bert mentioned, receiving the variance primarily due to the hundred-and-fifty-foot separation requirement that the new ordinance that the city passed a couple of years ago. Now, Quick Trip's been at this location since 1991. It's, if the variance is not granted, they can still remain open with the old store, but frankly, they would like to build a new store, it's a much better model, it's a much better serve, service to the neighbors. Everything from, from lighting to landscaping to everything is upgraded as an improvement to, to the neighborhood. We have the support of the church, we have the support of the two neighborhood associations. Both board meetings I attended to the neighborhood, it was unanimous support. The one comment card received was to the woman to, just to the east of the church there.
Right.
As Bert mentioned, we're actually moving slightly further away from her location.
Okay.
And I think, based on the new design, with the additional landscaping and the location of the trash and delivery, she's probably gonna have, hear a lot less noise at night than she would currently. This, this is a clearer version of the site plan, if you have questions about that, I can go into it. As Bert showed, this is the elevation. Just to kind of show you, this is kind of a overview of the current store, which is in the white rectangles there, there's the, the white rectangle at the bottom there is the current gas canopy. The new store is outlined in black. And the reason I put this up here is the, while I can, I understand the city ordinance, what the city ordinance says is that it's from property line to property line. So our city says sixty-six feet, or sixty-five feet, we say sixty-six, but what's the difference? It's still closer than one-fifty. What I want to pour out, point out to the commission here, as in, as in, a couple of previous cases, the commission has considered four projects that have been supported by the neighborhoods. They've looked at it from the standpoint, you've looked at it from the standpoint of the, how, how close it is from more, from building to building. That was the case for a convenience store, 2012, and also, I think, the She Shop in, shops in Roosevelt across from Hubble. In this case, we're currently a hundred-and-forty-two feet away from the church, if you're gonna go building to building, we're moving to a hundred-and-forty-eight feet. Still, strict reading of the city code, we're too close, so we, we're asking for a variance. But that is something for, I think, that I'd like the, the board to consider.
Sure.
Again, Quick Trip is not going to sell alcoholic liquor at this location, it is not seeking to do that, simply seeking to continue the business model that it's had currently. I mentioned it's been, you know, this, this, a store's been open since ninety-one. You know, the introduction of the separation requirement, understandable why the city did that, but it does create a hardship for Quick Trip in order to continue to, with its expansion plans and make beneficial use of the property. And this would not alter the character whatsoever. In fact, from our view, it would improve the area substantially from a operation standpoint and from the, the look and feel of the location. So, you know, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, concerns, comments. And again, Mike Talcott is here, if you have any specific operational questions.
One question I would have, Larry, we're, we're just looking at a variance here. Now, the variance test takes a little, takes a little metal to get to, can you speak to any of that?
My, what I would tell you is that Quick Trip sold wine and beer on the property since 1991. The introduction of the separation requirement for beer and wine sales does not allow Quick Trip to continue the expansion of the location to make beneficial use to what it would like to do. The ordinance change was not of Quick Trip's making, and the hundred-and-fifty-foot requirement will not alter the character of the, of the neighborhood as it's been selling beer and wine for decades. This is not introduction of a new use.
Okay.
So again, I, I'm deferring to, to the board to look at past decisions. We have a full support of the neighborhood associations.
Sure.
In order for us to do this, obviously, without the ability to sell beer and wine, it doesn't make economic sense for them to, to expand the store. So that's just kind of like, like Bert said, we're in between a rock and a hard place from that aspect, so.
Having a church send a support letter for a liquor license holder.
Well, you know, the, the pastor said, as long, as long as no one gets drunk, he's okay with the sale of beer and liquor, that's what he told me. I said, well, I can't guarantee that, but...
Everything in moderation.
That's right, so.
All right, any other questions for Larry?
Larry, as a technicality, if you just added on to the existing store, would the, would the existing use be able to continue?
No.
Okay.
No, they couldn't put, as you've seen in some Quick Trip locations, they've added on to the back, added their QT kitchens. That also kicks the, the ordinance into effect.
Yeah, okay.
So it wouldn't be able to, they, it makes more sense for them to bring the new model and really bring it to the neighborhood.
I think it's extremely attractive, it's just a technical question.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, thanks, Larry. Is there anybody here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, closed public portion, go to board deliberation.
Actually, I think this is a huge improvement. I would, I would support a variance at their request, and so moved.
All right, we've got a motion.
I'll second.
Linda beats you to the punch, Dave.
It's my neighborhood, so.
I'm a gentleman, I'm sorry.
And I think, I think for the purpose of, of, of the record, when we look at granting a variance, we need to have some reasoning behind that, it's certainly a good project. This won't alter the essential character of the locality of the land in question. We already had a convenience store here with this use, it's consistent. The, the city ordinance did change, and I'm not commenting one way or on the other on that, but it did. So that has changed the circumstances for how the appellant runs their business. It's a unique set of circumstances that they did not do or cause themselves. So, therefore, I, I think they meet that test as well.
Bert, I have a quick, does this mean that it goes back to the city council then if we grant this?
It, it will go back to the council, and then they, they just, they can decide what they want to do with it, but it has to come back to us, or they have the choice. Right, okay, so they have the choice, it, it will go to them that we made this decision. They have the option to send it back to us, but even when they send it back to us, if we choose not to rehear it, we don't have to, correct? Or to, or to reopen it?
Rehear it, then you can...
We don't...
I think it's interpreted that...
We don't have to take any action.
That you don't have to take any action, don't, yeah, change your, change your decision.
Okay, right, right. So it has to be brought up on the agenda, but, but we don't have to take any action?
You can either approve what you've already done...
Okay, so, so we reapprove what we've approved?
If you...
Yeah, if we so choose to. Okay, all right.
And at that point, then it's done.
All right, right. Did that help?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, so we got a motion and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I oppose.
Oh, okay, all right, so, all in favor was four, opposed one. Okay, all right, vote is four to one, motion passed, my apologies, Cherie.
Not a problem.
Okay, all right, before anybody leaves, our other business, we have to approve minutes from the last meeting. Those who were here at last meeting can make a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
And a second? Yeah, sure, I'm pretty sure you were, yes. Yeah, because we got done early for city council. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now that would be four to zero, because you can't vote on that one.
Oh, that's true.
Because you weren't here. All right, so, all right, minutes last month approved. Anything else we need to do for business? Okay, thank you all very much for being here today, Cherie, welcome back.
Thank you, it's good to be back, it beats chemo boot camp, believe me.
Excellent, okay. All right, well, thank you everybody for your time, patience.